All right, Commissioners. So I'm looking for a motion to break the tie whether we're going to consider this current amendment or substitute by Commissioner Anderson as in conflict with the one we just passed, number one, from Commissioner Shaw. I am leaning toward it being a conflict. If there's not a motion, I'm not going to take up this amendment. No, that was a motion to go to the public hearing. Going once?
So what do you need a motion for?
If Commissioners think that it's not a conflict, then they should make a motion for the diocese to decide. Otherwise, I'm considering it a conflict. Going once? Going twice? Okay, so we're back to the original motion, which was Commissioner Howard. Commissioner Howard, would you read that motion into the record one more time, please?
Chair, I'm just, to be fair, do we need to wait for Chair Anderson to return?
Uh...
I mean...
No.
I'm being nice, I know.
He'll be here. Okay.
In gentrifying areas, regardless of transition depth, zone depth, compatibility should be waived on the corridor lot if the development is participating in an affordable housing bonus program, affordability unlocked, or the smart housing program.
So we had a few questions asked. We have one more spot for a question. We're going to pick up where we left off. Are there any other questions for the motion maker or for staff? Commissioner Yanis Pulido?
Has anyone from staff looked at the impact of waiving compatibility or not having compatibility in neighborhoods where there are only one to two lots between corridors?
And Steph, before you answer that, I mean, if this conflicts with something we did earlier, I'm happy to pull it.
It's too late for that, we already pulled it.
There you go.
So, the question was, how would this impact the corridors where it's taking, where the change is taking place?
Yeah, so I'm thinking about gentrifying areas. In particular, we've gotten a lot of feedback from people who have entire neighborhoods that are one to two lots from the corridor. So if there's no compatibility on the corridors, and even if the transition areas are dialed back to fewer lots, have you all looked at the impact on neighborhoods that are directly in between those corridors? That may only be one to two lots between corridors?
So the, I guess, in, with this motion, we were thinking, it sounded like to us that the motion was to actually totally eliminate transition zones, thus the need for allowing no compatibility to occur when affordable housing is taken.
I think that's right. It's leaning toward, it's leaning toward transition zones being gone.
Right.
They're sort of...
I think it's offering, if, if, if staff, we've said to try to protect the vulnerable areas, and so if staff, in their vision of protection, remove transition zones completely, we've said scale it back a little, but if you remove it completely, I think this is to say, well, let's, let's let the bonus at least go up on the corridor.
So I guess I would say, given that you passed the compatibility amendment previously to make it 100 feet everywhere, that would, there's that change from 50 to 100 on corridors where there, where there is going to be compatibility, but if they take the bonus, then there wouldn't be, so you would have situations where, because the transition zone's been removed, you've got single-family that's going to be right next to corridor lots that are, that are taking the bonus and have no compatibility, but you have that, you're going to have that in transition zones also because there's no compatibility, and, and those areas that have single-family today are going to be in that same situation where they are right next to a corridor lot that won't have compatibility applied at all. In the, in the vulnerable areas, it'll just be if there's affordable housing taken, taken as a part of that.
So I think the question is, have you studied that? Have you studied the impact of the removal of compatibility?
Yes, that is my question, but I also want to clarify, I believe our motion only applied to TODs, not all corridors, or did it apply to all corridors?
We're not, I think the motion is over here, and I don't think it's really...
Yes, but there was just reference to one, to yours.
Yes. Okay, we're going back. So no, mine was the general compatibility standard, when there are no transition areas, compatibility. And it wasn't, it did not depend on vulnerable or high, it was not area-specific, it just, when you do not have a transition area, you apply the compatibility standards, and it was just to make those consistent between all the zones, and per council's wishes. So that's all, that's all mine did.
And there was an addendum to it.
And there was an addendum that I, now I'm not, I think what I heard is that around TODs and centers, it directed staff to put transition areas around those so they don't get impacted by compatibility.
However, that doesn't, well, per other PC direction, that doesn't actually apply to this amendment because we passed the amendment saying, overriding all other instruction, don't map more transition zones to these areas, so...
To vulnerable areas.
Yes.
Right.
And do we have any more room for questions? Since I have one that I think might be helpful.
There's no more room for questions.
Okay.
But staff can further respond to Commissioner Yanis Pulido's question if, if you need to.
I guess maybe just clarifying what you mean by impact in these areas?
Yes, for example, for, just for communities that live very closely between these major, what are being considered corridors, and some that are bisecting neighborhoods completely that have not been treated as major corridors but are named corridors, have you looked at the impact on those neighborhoods of this upzoning with no compatibility, basically?
I, I guess, no, in the sense that, that because there's transition being mapped in the draft map, they're being treated as transition areas elsewhere throughout the city, but given this amendment, I, I guess that the immediate impact would just be that if, if there's no bonus taken, then they are going to be adjacent to buildings that are actually going to be shorter than they otherwise would be in the transition areas, and, and would only be akin to the other transition areas if affordable housing bonus is taken.
Thank you, Greg. All right, those are all the questions. Commissioners, if you think you need more questions, you can always make a motion to do that. If not...
Can I make a motion? I just, just for additional question? Can I put that up?
Second by Azar. All those in favor, raise your hands. Any opposed? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay, it's a question to staff. Inportability unlocked, so if you have a lot that is on the corridor in a vulnerable area, or anywhere for that matter, isn't it exempt from the compatibility standards if it complies with importability unlocked? So I think we already have a, kind of a precedent, I would say, if that's true.
Yes, as, as the draft is currently written.
Okay, thank you. That was my question. So it seems like there's some precedent for this.
Those are all the questions, Commissioners. Anyone speaking against? Speaking for? Speaking neutral? For, Commissioner Yanis Pulido?
Neutral.
Neutral, go ahead.
I'm particularly concerned about allowing this for the bonus program, especially because there's been a lot of question about MU-A, and what kind of height that actually allows in some of the really vulnerable areas, where, like I said, it's a very intense use right up next to, again, next to a lot of single-family homes in a neighborhood that has really tried to reduce disruption in those areas, so I am concerned about that, and would actually suggest taking that out if someone was amenable to it, at least the bonus piece, but otherwise. I appreciate the intent to maximize along corridors, and I think there's a lot of areas of town where actually we've heard people say you need to do as much as possible on the corridor in order to ensure that we're getting the, the units that we need without disrupting the neighborhoods, but I just think that needs to be taken into account into these areas where the corridors start to get really close together.
Speaking for? Commissioner Azar?
So I'll, I'll speak for this amendment. One thing I think I want to say is I'm not sure why we would take away the bonus, because then we're just waiving compatibility on the base, and from my perspective, if we're not getting unrestricted housing, I'm, I don't know if I'm in favor of waiving compatibility for not getting unrestricted housing.
No, we already discussed, that was in conflict, so...
Yeah, and so I'm just making my comment and saying that in the, I, I think, as this stands, I think I like the idea that we get more unrestricted housing, we don't limit that ability. That's one aspect of why I'm supporting this. The other reason is, I feel like if there is any concern, and there is some concern that if we minimize our transition zones in gentrifying areas, we'll have an issue with compatibility on the lot, which goes against council direction, which would not be the intention, I think this allows us to actually move towards that have shallower transition zones in gentrifying areas, which could help those, and I think, you know, manage the displacement effects of the transition zones in those areas, at the same time ensuring that we have unrestricted housing on the corridors, and that we do not impact corridor capacity in any way.
Can I make an amendment at this point?
Sure.
Just to extend corridors to centers as well.
Okay, motion by Thompson, second by Kenny.
And just, just in the same idea of, if, if we are going to be pulling back some of those transition areas, just to make sure that we're maximizing our centers and corridors? And again, just for the bonus.
Just adding the "and centers," where it says corridor lot and centers. Yeah? Questions? Speaking against?
So that's just in vulnerable areas? Centers in vulnerable areas?
Yes. Well, that, it's my understanding that's the only, we've already said to map transition areas around all the centers, so that's the only centers that wouldn't have transition areas mapped.
All right. Speaking against? Let's take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Abstaining? Okay, that passes 11-0-1. Back to the main motion. Anyone speaking against or for? Let's take a vote. This one is Howard Azar, and it's Azar number two in front of you. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, that passes 10-1-1. All right, Commissioner Seeger.
Oh, back to Azar, sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Is Ms. Leake here?
It's the community development commission, I think, across the hall, so she's having to go back.
Okay, Commissioner Seeger.
I pass, but the reserve to come back, the right, the right to come back.
You're not going to get two in a row, so...
I pass.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Thompson?
I think it's my first one.
And I did four.
Well, I did one, and someone, right, so I want the, the red and green corridors, I can't find mine right now, but...
Mapping further? Yeah, here you go.
It's on the very back thing.
So keeping with council and PC comments regarding gentrifying areas, floodplains, et cetera, map existing and planned rail lines as corridors with transition zones.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hempel, staff. I think we may have had a similar discussion early on when we were asking questions in general. Go ahead.
Lacy Patterson, planning and zoning. I think generally, staff does not oppose, however, I would kind of say that we will be focusing our attention probably more on the stops, potential stops in the full rail line, since a rail line is not quite the same as a bus line with multiple stops along it. A rail line has a lot more uses that back up to it, housing that backs up to it, it's not quite as active along the entire line, kind of like a transit line, just to give you that clarification.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Shaw?
For staff, so do we have pretty robust transition areas mapped around all our hubs, both current and future rail lines?
We're going to have to review them.
Actually, I have a presentation.
Okay.
I think it was from a couple of days ago.
Can you do that in response to your question, Commissioner Shaw? Or did you have other questions?
No, that's good. I, I would love to see it and have a discussion around, we can look at...
Andrew Rivera, I currently don't have our tech, we could table this item, we can stay at ease.
Okay.
Commission's desire.
Okay. But, I mean, they're, they're not, so there's, there are areas where, you know, it's basically across the street from a, a stop, a current existing stop, and there's, you know, those properties are, would be impacted by compatibility by, you know, single-family homes along a rail line. So in their backyard, there's a rail line already, and yet they're stopping development across the street from a, a station.
Any other questions?
Well, at the right time, I'd like to make an amendment.
Okay. It's always a good time.
Okay. So additionally, around transit stops, to map density in line with CAP Metro's density requirements for transit hubs. I think they have certain units per acre or, you know, metrics, and I'm looking at faces saying, no, not enough.
CAP Metro has declined to take that sort of position.
Okay. So I guess, just mapped with transit supportive density to support, you know, the transit in that area.
Map transit supportive density, is that...
Around the transit hubs, yes. Transit stops.
There's different definitions for that. Do you want it to be maybe 37 homes and jobs per acre, or, or greater?
I don't have a number. I would have to defer to some experts on what transit stops require to be, to work, so if anybody has a number, they can recommend it.
Question? Okay, let me get a second before there's questions. Is there a second?
A second.
It's a general, it's a general amendment right now, it's just not saying numbers. Go ahead, Commissioner Kenny.
Would you be amenable to pulling it down, to have an amendment that says that map our existing and planned rail line stop walksheds as corridors with transition zones with, with transit supportive densities?
Yes, I would support that.
Okay. Do you want to pull it down?
So I'll pull my amendment down.
Okay, so I'd like to offer an amendment that says, keeping with council and PC comments regarding gentrifying areas, floodplains, et cetera, map our existing and planned rail line stop walksheds as corridors with transition zones with transits, transit supportive densities.
So would, would that be on top of the existing one, or just to replace it? Because I guess my, my concern is, a lot of the stops already are a mile or more apart, so there's room on this corridor for actually more stops, and if we're just saying, we're just going to map the stops, then we're not going to get that density that would support stops in between in the future. And, you know, this is reserved way rail that's already running, and, and something that I think, we talked about doubling down on, on existing infrastructure.
So let me get a second real quick. A second by Shaw.
Okay, so to speak to that, I'm trying to be very reasonable and measured here in two different ways. One is keeping to the verbiage that you have here on existing and planned, so that if there are any planned stops, that can be planned as such, and I think it is reasonable to say that we should forego planning density in areas where we don't until we have a stop that's planned there, and that would, should be maybe a future process, because some of these rail lines do have distances between stops that are very large, and you cannot conceivably sometimes be between two of those stops and walk to one of them, especially the green line. And then the second is, is I'm not going to define transit supportive densities, we have it in, the ASMP speaks to it, there's differences of opinion about it, I don't want to get into an hour-long discussion here that we're not prepared for, and I do want to note that one of the interesting things about transit supportive densities within walksheds is you look at the walk shed, and you look at the entire density, so that gives some flexibility to make it look like this, or make it look like that, or make it look like this. So it just says, let's achieve transit supportive densities, and I believe that this amendment does then, is then more, bring the LDC more into compliance with the strategic mobility plan.
Can you answer Thompson's question directly, that it is restrictive than his?
Yes, because it is stops rather than lines, however, I am specifying that it is walksheds and not just, you know, two lots deep.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Hempel, yeah?
So sometimes stops move, they're not quite planned, they, until they know what's going to happen, so how, how could we accommodate for a stop that hasn't quite landed yet in its final destination?
The way I would read this language is to say that if a stop is planned and we know it's going in, that, that would be one that we could go ahead and map, and if we're not super clear on where it might go, that this mapping might need to wait for that stop to be actually decently planned.
Any other questions? Okay, this is the Kenny-Shaw amendment. Commissioners speaking against? Or neutral? Or for? Let's take a vote. All those in favor of the amendment, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstaining? That motion passes 9-2-1. The amendment, thank you. All right, now we're back to Thompson-Hempel. Any questions on that?
It's basically the previous.
Yes.
Okay.
This is just the base. Speaking for or against?
I'll speak for.
Go ahead.
So we've talked a lot about this, even with bus lines that are just passing through between stops where it's trying to return to, back to their route, and this is the same thing, so I wish that there was a way that we could have CAP Metro support on what they envision as far as for where that density could be, but it's one of those, you know, once it's, once it gets planned, I think that is definitely helps us on the indication of it. So, anyway, so that's why I'm going to support this, because it's more of a predictable path versus just saying anywhere along it, so, anyway.
Thank you. Against or neutral? Speaking for? Let's take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, that passes 10-0-2. All right, Commissioner Kenny?
Okay, I'm going to take up my number six, just because this is a pet peeve of mine, and I'm hoping that other Commissioners might see a lot of virtue in number four and number five, and maybe offer it themselves. Number four is the Austin Justice Coalition, and then number five speaks to some AISD concerns. So number six, the intent statement is require helicopter landing pads to be available only for legitimate public interest activities, e.g., medical facilities, news, law enforcement, and the suggested text is establish helicopter landing pads as a use only allowed via a CUP, and that that use only be granted for public interest activities, not for private use or regular transportation use.
All right, are they both part of the motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? Second by Yanis Pulido? Staff?
Okay, so just to clarify the...
I'm sorry, I think, do I need to say that this doesn't include airports?
So I was going to ask, this, is this really focused on helipads as an accessory use and not a standalone use?
Outside of, of airports is the intent.
I guess, you said legitimate public use, and I guess...
Public interest use.
Think of that as like civic uses, hospitals, that...
Medical facilities, news, and law enforcement are examples listed.
I mean, I guess we don't oppose, we'd have to talk to our friends in aviation about the implications of it. Is there, and then, can I just ask, what is the, what is the preclusion trying to get at?
The preclusion?
By limiting it to the legitimate civic use?
I'll speak to it in a second.
Okay.
Yes.
Can I make a comment?
I think it might be time for that.
Can I make a comment? Yes, there, there was a case a couple of years ago about a large property off of 2222, they, that was right on the river, they wanted to put in a helicopter, heliport, so that the owner did not have to drive to the airport, and that is why I'm supporting this. I don't think we need heliports on residential properties.
Commissioner Seeger, if you will work with me and save that for the for and against?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Can I speak to my motion?
Yes, speak to your motion.
Okay, so to speak to that, the, we have already started to see some of this come to Austin. F1 was another time when they set up a bunch of helipads on top of parking garages around town, council had to intervene and restrict it back. There's a very interesting illustrative case of Rio de Janeiro has some of the worst traffic in the world, and one of the problems is that the very wealthy class has been able to opt out of the traffic problems, and there are helipads on top of virtually all the downtown buildings now, so that they don't have to use traffic, and I believe that when we allow the wealthy class to opt out of civic problems is when those civic problems start becoming a lot harder to solve. I also don't think that Austin residents should be subject to noise pollution or invasions of privacy, just because people want to not sit in traffic. It's a city for all of us.
Speaking against? Speaking neutral? Speaking for? Commissioner Seeger?
Okay, I'll continue my comments, that this is highly disruptive to residential properties. It is pretty much, would be pretty much used exclusively by the very wealthy, and I do not think that their need to circumvent our traffic issues should impound all the properties around them, whether they're residential or business.
Speaking against or neutral? Okay, I'll speak neutral. I mean, I, I think there's, there's room for enjoying our hill country from, from a helicopter ride, and so I think public interest activities only are sort of extremely overly restrictive, but... Anyone else speaking for? Against? Neutral? Neutral, go ahead. Commissioner Flores?
I just want to mention that I, I'll be voting for, but, but I just want to make this comment... comment, that with the discussions going on about unmanned aerial systems and vehicles, there's talk of verti pads, or vertical pads. So that's just something to keep in mind as we're talking about what kinds of things that we'll be allowing, so, thank you.
Speaking for? Against or neutral? Let's take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Abstaining? All right, that motion passes eleven zero one.
Two.
Oh, two. Shay, sorry.
Ten zero two?
Ten zero two. All right. I'll take mine up. Okay, so it's sort of a very general, general amendment about improving site plan process. I know we've heard a lot from staff about this. Explore ways to cut down on the time it takes to deliver site plan approvals. I know there's a modified, fundamentally shifted site plan process that's in the current draft. The idea is that all of this work that we're putting into this draft could then just not be realized and be a very painful, continue to be a painful process. And I have a top 10 list of my own of experience that my team has had with the site plan process. I won't share that here. So anyway, that's my motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Shay. Staff?
So I apologize, I'm trying to find the text of your, is it, okay, it's your, it's your only one, right?
Yes.
Okay, easy to find. Agree. If I'm reading it right, it's just, put our heads together, roll up our sleeves, and look for ways, tangible ways to improve the process that haven't so far been identified, that go beyond the points that Donna and I have repeatedly made, right? And it's not, there's not a specific directive other than just to work, work at it.
Yes, please.
Yeah, we can absolutely agree to that.
Thank you. Questions? Speaking against? Neutral? Speaking for? All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay. Twelve zero. Commissioner Flores?
Right, I'm going to take Commissioner Kenny up on his offer and take up his number five, schools, parking, and zoning.
Okay.
I will read, this is just for intent. Work with school districts to, one, ensure zoning or procedures for school district property could facilitate the production of affordable housing if desired by districts. Two, ensure zoning feasibly and reasonably allows schools with a more traditional urban form to be allowed in the urban core. Three, removes parking minimums, allowing school districts to build the amount of parking they deem appropriate. And four, establishes procedures for working with school districts to regulate on-street parking near schools and/or implement traffic demand management programs to facilitate school operations, but does not increase minimum parking for housing near schools. So I'm taking this one up because I see the value in allowing schools to have a little bit more leeway in producing neighborhood schools that encourage walking. You know, I think it's important for, for encouraging community feelings with schools and with kids, so that's why I'm taking this one up.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Kenny. Staff?
Donna Galati, Development Services Department. We have carefully crafted regulations that went through negotiations with schools, with all public schools, including charter and school districts and the community from 2016, and those are carried forward in the draft code. Additionally, we have inter-local agreements with many of the school districts and with almost all school districts within the city of Austin, and those inter-local agreements recently came up on their expiration date, and we only extended them about two years for most, five years for Austin Independent School District, in order to renegotiate those agreements in line with the new code. Thank you.
Questions? Commissioner Shay then, Kenny?
So would you say that as far as for this amendment, you're already headed in this direction anyway? Is that correct?
Yes, we believe that we'll be able to work with the school districts, you know, within, you know, between adoption and their new expiration date coming up in a couple of years, and, you know, and be able to utilize all of the tools in the new code, and, and again, negotiate something that works well for the schools.
So you're supportive of, basically supportive of the amendment?
Of the, of the intent, yes.
Okay, and then I have a question for Commissioner Tyke, if maybe you can input a little bit from AISD as far as for the new code and what's been going on, maybe a little update?
And I apologize that we didn't have an amendment ready. Our staff has been occupied with other things. Our staff has prepared a memo, and I can, it's a draft memo at this point. I can read it to you. It's not crafted as an amendment. If you wish that, or I can provide a hard copy or an electronic copy, what would you prefer? As far as responding to this, I can't commit to, I mean, it sounds good to me as an individual trustee, but I can't commit the board or our staff. I do know that our staff has been talking to city staff and about certain issues, primarily about the P public zoning for our properties, and that's primarily what this amendment, I mean, not this amendment, but this memo addresses. So what would you like me to do?
Can I tag in?
Commissioner Tyke, go ahead.
Just because, so I've read the memo, and just to summarize it, so they were expressing some concerns, a couple of them, one of which was that they thought that the P standards weren't clear, and so that introduced uncertainty into their process, and it sounds like maybe y'all were just trying to set the stage for the inter-local agreements to be setting those standards. And then the other concern that they had was, or another concern on there was about rezoning current residential zones to P, and that that might complicate their plans to maybe utilize some sites to develop affordable housing.
Correct.
Thank you. Our, our discussions with AISD staff, we had a meeting earlier this week, have been positive, and we anticipate continuing discussions, but at this time, I think as part of this process, right today, we're not ready to really commit to anything with regard to mapping. You know, there was an approach that was taken in, in draft three. That was revisited as part of that process, and we're going back and looking at some of the, the approach that was followed with draft three and kind of considering those two together. We understand, you know, the issues that the school district has raised, but we, I think at this point, feel like we need to continue discussing, discussing the matters with AISD staff, and so I think tonight, we're not going to be prepared. You all can recommend whatever you see fit to recommend, but I think tonight, we're going to have to take under advisement whatever you're, whatever you vote to do.
I'm going to continue on. I mean, so in this amendment also specifies on-street regulation, so I assume that at that point, you're talking about not, I mean, this is right-of-way, this is public space. I mean, I don't know if staff can input, I mean, is that possible? I mean, is this something that it kind of, I don't know, I don't know where it steps as far as for inter-local agreements and how it goes off their property onto public right-of-ways based upon the, you know, whatever agreements the city has done. I mean, how far are you guys able to go, or would you guys go?
So Mike, Mike, just to be clear, my comments a minute ago were directed at the P public zoning issue. To your point, are, we regulate, are, most of our regulations that apply to the school districts are in our inter-locals. The regulations that we have in our code, which kind of function as a backstop, also apply to charters. Charters under state law are also public schools, and so the codified regulations have to apply to everyone. And these are, as Donna mentioned, the 2016 ordinance was very carefully negotiated and crafted, and so I think we understand your intent, and we'll consider that going forward as we look at inter-local negotiations, as Donna mentioned, but I think we're going to have to remain, take anything that you recommend tonight under advisement with respect to schools.
Any other questions?
It may not be something that you're prepared to respond to right now, but at least Twitter was reporting that there was an AISD official or employee stating that P's couldn't be rebuilt in its current form because of development regulations, and that, so I'm not vouching for the accuracy either of the reporting of that statement or of the statement itself, but part of the statement here about working with schools in an urban form is the idea that, you know, there's been a lot of discussion here about things like impervious cover and heritage trees, and there are some things that there's more flexibility on than others in terms of the sentiment of council or the community, but that generally, this amendment is saying, hey, if, if there is some leeway to build an urban form school as opposed to a suburban campus, you know, can you, can you look at that?
We can, we can certainly look at anything you propose. I will say that AISD's inter-local, all the inter-local agreements, including AISD, incorporates development regulations, including design regulations, and there are certainly a large number of waivers from various design regulations that our code has, whether or not it is existing code or the draft code, because the inter-local agreement supersedes those regulations.
But P's might prove a timely and instructive example to, to test the code with, or test it, inter-local agreement with.
I think my statement would apply to any school in the school district.
Thank you.
Or in Austin city limits.
Any other questions? Commissioner Azar?
Trustee Tyke, quickly, I won't have, I guess, much time, but if you can just go over the highlights of what you have heard from your staff for their report?
In the memo that I had referenced, let me pull that up, so I'm, so they addressed the concerns about the, the fact that only 28 of our schools, out of the 115-plus schools were zoned P public, while the remaining school properties have a zoning designation other than public. And I think the concern, and my concern personally, would be that if we decided to redevelop some of our properties for affordable housing, that we would have too many, with a, with a public P zoning, we would have too many barriers, too many hoops to jump through, and that would delay progress on that and would increase the cost. And so I think that was, it would make, would also make school bond planning difficult if all of our properties were zoned P. And it was my understanding, perhaps, staff can clarify, that charter schools are zoned according to the areas that they're in, and they're not zoned P public. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So that was another area that we had, that staff had a concern with, is that, that our, our schools, which are public schools, just like charter schools are public schools, would be zoned P public, but the charter schools would not be. They could take on the zoning of the area around them. So that was another concern. And then in transition zones, there was a comment that the district supports reducing the application of transition zones in the areas susceptible to gentrification, as recommended by city staff in their staff report number one. And that's basically what that would be about. Staff is, my AISD staff is also going to be putting together some more specific recommendations in a memo that should come out this Friday, and I'm, they'll be supplying it to city staff too. And we appreciate very much city staff working with our staff, but I think the main contention that we have is that P public zoning right now. And while I can support the amendment that Commissioner Kenny brought, brought forward, I think that's, that's a good start in, in looking at some areas, particularly parking, which was an issue in the, in the previous land code rewrite. I think that what I would lift up for the major staff concern is that P public zoning for all of our properties.
So Commissioner Azar, I'll just remind you, if, if there's not another school amendment in our list, this would be the one that we should tack on amendments to, just throwing that out there. We have one more spot for...
Can I continue by tying quickly? I think, Commissioner Kenny, I think your, the first part of your amendment, and this is, I know Commissioner Flores' amendment, it does address this P issue. Am I correct in understanding that right? When you say ensure zoning or procedures for school district property could facilitate the production of affordable housing if desired by districts, that would address that P aspect?
Yes. This, that, that clause is an attempt to address the concern from AISD, and is essentially a prompt to say, can you go talk to AISD about this?
I hear you. I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Shaw?
To the point made earlier, charter schools, what, are there some examples of what zoning they have and how they might actually be able to build affordable housing? I'm just curious on what, what they got.
So Lacey may be able to help address that, but I just want to make one point, the, there's sort of the zoning map designation for schools, but the site development standards are, are set out in the code that really apply across zoning districts for the, for, for schools. So the zoning category is not really determinative with regard to site development. It is important, and again, we are continuing to work with AISD. The approach that was taken with respect to this draft is to essentially use P public for school district properties, except where a flum for a small area plan designated, designated it differently. And we are revisiting that and looking at potentially returning to the original approach of comparable equivalent zoning, but there are some issues that we have to work through with, with AISD staff and, and discuss, and we'll continue, continue to do that.
Yeah, and to address the mapping of charter schools, the properties are probably mapped to the comparable zoning of what they have today. So as, whereas AISD is a public, kind of city-owned facility, these charter schools often have single-family zoning in the same as the neighborhoods they're in, or some other form of zoning, a comparable zoning designation would have been applied. We haven't identified those properties for anything different.
Okay, those are all the questions, commissioners. We're going to get to speaking for and against? Any volunteers?
Just to speak briefly for to the, the last one that Commissioner Shay, you were asking about with regard to public right-of-way. This pretty much mirrors a recommendation that we made last year for draft three. It's not an amendment per se to the LDC, but I have heard, you know, continued interest in the idea that we should require off-street parking for housing near schools, and I thought what we did last year was a good approach to say, rather than requiring parking for our street that may not be required, if schools need curb space, let's work with them to get the curb space, and let's let the parking issue kind of sort of self-out if it's a curb space issue, or loading, unloading, et cetera. So, so TDM, hours of, you know, time limits on parking, you know, et cetera, let's, let's approach it through that approach rather than requiring parking that may not be needed to be built.
Speaking against or neutral? Speaking for? Commissioner Azar?
I'll just quickly say, I feel like, thank you, Trustee Tyke, and thank you to the good two commissioners who brought this forward. I think this does address some of those concerns, and I appreciate staff's work with AISD to ensure that we move forward with this in a seemingly manner. And I just want to say, I honestly want to thank AISD's commitment to affordable housing and ensuring that we have more affordability in our city, and I'm glad that the city can work closely with them on this to make sure that we get to there, so thank you.
Against or neutral? Speaking, go ahead, Commissioner Shay?
So I'm kind of neutral to supportive. I mean, I, I hear everything that's being said, but as far as for how it's going to get enforced, we got to have a good enforcement policy. If we're starting to dictate stuff that's supposed to happen in the right-of-way, I mean, I can tell you right now, when people drop off, pick up the kids, all that, nobody follows any of the rules. Where it says parking from this time to this time, nobody's following. They're parking their, whatever controls you put there, you know, I mean, it, it needs to get enforced, otherwise it's just going to upset everybody on how this is done. And maybe there needs to be written something where the schools don't say, well, that's not us, I, I have no control of the parents, that's a right-of-way. But if we are starting to dictate what happens to the right-of-way based upon the performance of the school, then I do think that we do need to make it that the schools do have a say to their parents versus using an excuse that it's not on my property, and I've run into this before, so.
Okay. Speaking against? Or for? Commissioner Thompson?
I guess I just, I really want to push the idea of the, the urban form on the schools and, and, you know, the parking and having those solutions. You know, when, when we talk about planning in traditional character, you know, the original original plan for Austin had a spot on there, the Waller Plan had a spot on there for a school, and we are shutting down that school this year. And, you know, this school in my neighborhood, Metz, is being shut down. These are walkable schools, the kids are walking to them, and, you know, there's, there's plenty of room to expand on, on the lot at P's. It's just it's got a big parking lot, and we need another solution so we can, you know, expand, create these urban form schools, and create the parking solutions that they need.
Okay. Let's take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right. That passes 12-0. Okay. It is 7:45. We've been going for 2 hours and 45 minutes. Are we ready to take a break? Okay, yes, Ms. Lee. Commissioner Azar?
So I'll quickly, let me go back and read what I read. So I had two pieces together. So one is revise, align, and strengthen post-construction requirements, reporting compliance, monitoring, and enforcement mechanisms and procedures, and penalties for all affordable housing bonus programs, affordability unlocked, and the smart housing program. And consider requiring a monitoring and compliance fee from all participants of the affordable housing bonus program.
Erica Lee. Yes, we're supportive of those. In fact, we've already done a cost of service study to potentially be able to implement a monitoring fee.
Thank you.
Questions?
So a question for staff. So I, I guess I have a concern that now that they're either already paying into a fee in lieu, or they're actually going to be build this, and now you're going to require them to pay to monitor this, and isn't that something that we can have, the fee in lieu that has been built up be taken care of? I mean, I guess we're trying to get people to build these things, and I've heard from developers, it's like, I'm not in the business of do, of building the affordable housing. So the idea is they'll build it and let somebody else take care of it. But now, my concern is this amendment is putting it back onto the person who develops, hey, you have to keep paying to monitor this. I mean, isn't this something that basically can go and base, you know, somebody on their books, they can say, okay, this is taken care of, somebody else is managing this. But my concern now is we're, we're putting a fee that we don't even know what it is, back on the developer who was about to, you know, build this, and now he has to maintain and manage it? So is there a way to, to pull this away and have it come from the fee-in-lie fees?
Well, I'm not sure that we want to take it from the in-lie fees, because the intention there is for those to be, for the fees to be used to create new affordable units. I mean, obviously, the, there is general fund that goes to the department that helps pay for staff who monitor. We also have third-party contractors who do monitoring for us. So, you know, the, the monitoring could be funded in a variety of ways. We'll certainly want to look at the potential fees to make sure that they wouldn't unduly disincentivize people from participating. So, so, I mean, we might not want to recapture the whole cost of it. I think we'll have to, we'd have to figure that out.
Okay. Would the motion maker consider taking that portion out? I mean, I agree that there should be a fee, that some, I mean, somebody's got to pay for it, but the concern is that, because we don't know what it is, my concern is going to deter people from, I don't know, being part of it. I mean, that's something that gets worked out and negotiated. I guess I don't want to make it say, hey, by the way, you also have to pay to be able to build this for somebody, you know? And it seems like they're, they have a mechanism with different funding, you know, they're exploring other, other funding streams, and I don't want to have to put it on the developer right from the get-go and potentially lose that affordable housing.
I, I'll be honest, I think I hear your concern, and I would welcome an amendment if you want to make it. I'm not sure I would support it. Maybe I would. I'm just trying to consider the fact, I'll tell you why this is in here, both of them. We hear a lot from the community that we're developing these units, and then we're not, essentially, they're not serving the purpose that they're meant to serve. There's a lot of questioning around compliance and monitoring. And actually, I, I would argue that I think the city is doing way better on this than we used to, and I want to honestly appreciate the effort of staff and council to ensure this. One of the challenges that we keep facing is that as we go towards third-party compliance, we don't have the funding for that. It can either come from the general fund, or it could come from another source. So this was my way of identifying that source, but I'm open to an amendment. So if somebody wants to float that.
Okay. So I'll make an amendment to consider innovative funding streams for managing the, well, basically for managing this affordable housing system, I guess. I don't, I don't want to have to put it on any one person with this, is basically what I'm saying. It might come from a balance of different things, but I don't want to be putting it on one or the other.
So you're striking from all participants of the program and saying pursue innovative funding streams?
No, when it, where it, I don't know, because my thing got cut off. If, where it talks about having the developer pay for the maintenance.
So currently it says, consider requiring a monitoring and compliance fee from all participants
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Of the affordable housing bonus program.
So anyway, so I...
So how about consider requiring a monitoring and compliance fee to be paid by pursuing innovative funding streams?
That's fine.
Is there a second? Consider requiring a monitoring and compliance fee to be covered by innovative funding streams. Second by Commissioner Hempel. Questions?
Purpose, just so people are clear that that's why we're doing that.
Okay. Help me, help me understand that a little bit more. So it's not currently a requirement? Is that correct? In the current draft, there's not a fee that's being charged to the developers for monitoring?
That is correct.
So do we need to say we're doing something to deter something where it's not there right now?
So I think we should include the language that Commissioner Shaw just brought in, yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to have you pull that down and resubmit this amendment. Commissioner Shaw, it's on...
Let's see, it started, so we need Shea's and mine together, is what you're saying?
Yes. Consider requiring a monitoring and compliance fee to be covered by innovative funding streams.
So as not deter the development of affordable housing?
So as to not deter?
Yes.
The development of affordable housing? Okay. Shaw, second by Shea. All right. Questions now? Speaking against? Commissioner Kenny? Actually, go ahead, Commissioner Anderson, please, though.
Sorry, just a quick question, because I don't remember if we have voted on this different amendment, but is there any monitoring of the density bonus units right now?
Yes, absolutely. We, we've had a third-party contractor who's been monitoring the density bonus units.
And that's just in the last few years, right? Or...
I don't know exactly how many years, but multiple years.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kenny, are you speaking against?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I just think the amendment as is is pretty simple. This is a, a simple concept. I mean, I think everyone's looking at all kinds of innovative funding fees, but this is one that's specific, and I think comes out of the Hauser community, of which Commissioner Azar is a part of, and kind of knows what he's doing, and, and that this is just a, an idea to consider. And that I think our calibration amendment and the purpose statement in the affordable housing chapter cover, you know, let's not do stuff that will overall hurt our program. So just think it's unnecessarily, and actually kind of confusing it, like, a fee is a fee, it's not a funding stream. So if, if the fee is covered by innovative, I just, I think the amendment is making it unnecessarily complicated.
Okay. Speaking for? Or against or neutral?
Against.
Go ahead, Commissioner Thompson.
I, I think we already require some fees. If you build an elevator, you have to have that elevator inspected regularly. If you build, you know, housing that, that, people in that housing need, you know, in a multi-unit complex are going to need garbage collecting, et cetera. So whoever buys that property after it's built, or whoever maintains it, is going to have ongoing city fees that they're going to have to deal with. We're talking about, you know, perhaps having flood control thing, you know, situations where maybe I have a tank, and that tank is going to need an inspection at an ongoing basis. So we're going to have to have some ongoing fees, and, and I just see this as one of them, and we shouldn't shy away from it.
Speaking for?
Are we just talking about the amendment?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Commissioner Hempel?
I, just the, the conversations that we've been having about needing to be really sensitive to developers taking the bonus, I, I think that this helps clarify that.
Okay. Anyone else speaking? Go ahead, Commissioner Anderson, are you speaking for or against?
I have no idea.
Okay.
Someone else wants to speak, let me know. I mean, it just seems like we're trying to get to compliance and monitoring, maybe by a third party. And so if, if that's the goal, then I don't even know why we have to mention a fee, because if that's a requirement, and it's only done by a certain entity, then of course that fee would be involved, and that would all come into the calibration of the bonus and what it's worth. And, I mean, I'm probably going to support this. It just seems like, seems like we keep talking about a fee, but we actually just want the compliance and monitoring, and I just wonder if there's a better way to get to that.
Okay. With that, let's take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those against? Abstaining? Okay, so that motion fails. Five, six, one. We're back to the original amendment. We've had one question asked. Any other questions? Commissioner Shaw?
Now I'm confused, but I just want, so this is clearly saying to try to get a fee to replace what now is in a city, city budget. It's a budgeted
Yes.
contract. So now we're going to go charge a fee to the developer. That's what we're saying here. So lower the city's responsible cost and put it on the developer. That's what we're saying. Okay.
So I think I'll
Just want to make clear.
Let Ms. Lee respond to that as well, but I think before that, I just want to mention two things. One would be, I think, to her point, they're doing the study to say that it's not going to be, like, we're not going to recover the entire cost of the monitoring, it might be something else. So there's going to be some sensitivity analysis around that. And the other piece would be, I think one reason this is going to become, we're suddenly going from 1,500 units to 9,000 units, and I know we feel like 9,000 is not enough, but suddenly we're asking for monitoring and compliance for a whole lot more. So otherwise, the general fund really has to kick into gear and make sure that all of that is monitored and comply, is in compliance, or there will be something to be said about how do we recover that. So this would hopefully allow us monitoring compliance of a more robust program that we're hoping to get out of the code.
And that was going to be my point, is that, you know, we do have some funding budgeted for this third-party monitoring, but if, if the portfolio expands substantially, then we would need to either increase the funding for that third-party, we, we need to increase the funding somehow.
Any other questions? Speaking against? These are both three and four together. Speaking against?
I'm going to speak neutral.
Sure.
Okay. So I'm going to speak neutral. I mean, you know, as Commissioner Hempel mentioned, I mean, we don't want to deter people from taking the bonuses, and I've been in situations where developers says, I don't want to mess with it. And if we have to keep dinging in it, they have to keep maintaining it, that, that becomes problematic. I mean, the, the other thing is, I mean, we should hope that we should have thousands more that we need to be managing, but the responsibility for affordable housing is not just on the developers, it's, it's on all of us. So why is it that we're getting them to pay for it? I mean, all of us in this room, all of us in this city should be supportive of this thing, not just saying, hey, get the developer to pay for this. So, I mean, I, I know the intent, and I think that, you know, and I appreciate the intent, so I'm going to be probably more neutral on this, in hopes that at least there's, the intent continues.
Speaking for? Commissioner Azar?
I'll speak for. I definitely think we all have a responsibility, and I think that that responsibility also includes capturing some of the value that we are giving away with increased entitlements. The bonus is extremely generous to developers. I believe it has been extremely generous to developers since it was created. And I know there needs to be some calibration, but this one seems even more generous. So I think we're just saying that the, the cost increases, it is a burden, if we're even going to keep these. We also, I, I think the biggest part for me, too, is not just compliance, but monitoring, ensuring that we have a benchmark for what we're actually getting for these units. I mean, I point out the one restricted unit available listed on Maynor right now, that's a $175,000 condo that's 433 square feet. We're getting out of these units. And I think, I definitely know developers shirk at extra stuff, but they do that more when it comes out at the end. If this is upfront, and they see it in the list of fees that they need to pay upfront, I think that they're going to be less likely to get freaked out about it later. So I, I just support it as an upfront kind of cost that we can present to developers.
Speaking, that was for. Speaking against or neutral? Commissioner Anderson?
Still probably neutral. It just seems like if we're, if the fees go up here, then the value of the bonus goes down until the requirement of a certain amount of housing goes down to meet that. And so it seems like we're talking about a piece of pie, and we're just talking about different ways to split it up. Probably going to support it just because it says consider. I would hope that, you know, staff looks at best practices, and personally, for me, I, I've heard of a lot of folks who build who just refuse to use bonuses altogether because they don't want to deal with that process, they don't want to deal with uncertainty. You know, is this going to be a fee that can change next year, can change the year after that, or is it locked at one time? To which case, you know, there's this 22-year-old home, this still has another 70 years of, you know, deed restriction affordability, because it's an ownership unit, and then, you know, the fee keeps going up, or it's locked at this low rate. It's just, there's just a lot to think through here, but because it's just considering, there's nothing, you know, definite about it. But it's going to take a really big conversation to land on what's right here, but it's going to be really good to figure out a way to monitor all these units.
Okay. I'm going to jump in here real quick and speak for. I think what's compelling and very, extremely critical is kind of what Commissioner Azar mentioned about just changing the perception in the community of all this hard work that we're doing on this body to create these affordable housing units, and the perception in the community is that they're either misused or not monitored, or just, they just, there's just a bad rap that goes with it. And I think this, this, you know, this is a good starting point to, to turn that around. So all of this hard work is, is not for nothing. Speaking against or neutral? Commissioner Howard?
I think I'm going to speak against. I think, all things being equal, the idea of, the whole premise of paying an additional fee seems, seems to be a deterrent in my, one sense, because I think that the idea is you want to suggest that this is something that's obviously mutually beneficial. So I don't know. I think just in principle, I would say, no, let's not charge a fee.
Okay. Last commissioner speaking for. Commissioner Seeger.
And my position is, let's charge a fee. Let's charge the fee of the entity that is going to make a profit, profit off the development. We need this monitoring, and this could be considered part of the upfront costs that the builder needs to consider. Yes, we might lose some affordable units, which is very tragic. However, I don't think that the monitoring can be such a deterrent, such as a home builder, when he builds a new home, he buys an insurance policy against, for that home for its performance for 10 years. Perhaps this could be a fee, whether it be prorated or not, to pay for the monitoring, and then the developer is out of the picture, the monitoring has been paid for. We don't have to create this huge budget item to monitor all these units and And hopefully, we still get all of the desired affordable units.
All right. With that, can we take a vote? We started this amendment at, before 6:30, I think. An hour and 45 minutes. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Abstaining? Okay, that passes 10-1-1. Now are we ready for a break? Okay. There's no dinner break. There's a break, like a vending machine break for 15 minutes. We'll be back here at 8:20. Okay, commissioners, it is 8:28. Like to reconvene this meeting. We have a quorum on the dais. We're missing a couple of commissioners. Janes Polido and Anderson. And Kenny. So we're done with...
So it's my turn?
So it's Shay's turn. We're about halfway down. We're going to finish this one, and then we'll see what time we are at. We might do one more round, but no more than that. So pick your favorite amendments. I know we said you can add three more, but we didn't promise we're going to get through all...
You got to pick your favorite.
Nine or 12 of some of them. Not looking at Commissioner Shaw. Okay, Commissioner Shay.
Okay. This is going to be number three. It says, create a program for existing affordable rental housing to remain as long as possible for all scales. And this has to do with how potentially what we are doing is going to be increased, substantially increase taxes for a lot of existing affordable rental homes. And the rents are very much aligned with what the property taxes are. If property taxes are going to be going up considerably because of whatever entitlements are happening as things are being sold, then those are going to continue to be raised to a point where it is no longer going to be tenable for people to stay there. And then that gets torn down and redeveloped to be more expensive housing. So this is basically, let's see, let's, okay. So it says, no one has talked about displacement of existing renters in existing affordable homes. As taxes go up, so does rent. We need to help landlords of older properties to be able to maintain the near-end life structures, end-of-life structures to be refurbished and renovate and maintain. Ideas could be to create a fund to offset the costs of maintaining an older affordable rental property. Considering use of affordable housing funds to create interest-free fund solution to borrow money to refurbish older rentals. Consider tax credits for affordable units on a varying scale. People who are leasing out more affordable units are not making a killing. If there are no protections created, the property tax increases from the LDC mapping will hurt these renters.
All right. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Seeger. Staff?
Ms. Lee?
Eric Lee, neighborhood housing. So the funding that the city currently has for affordable housing can be used for rehabilitation with affordability requirements. So generally, you know, any time city funds are used, there has to be an affordability requirement to get that community benefit, so...
But for existing affordable homes, right? So it's, they're not part of any program. It's just because of the age of home, you know, it's existing market affordable housing. Those are the ones that, my concern is, we're going to be losing those at an incredible rate with these possible new entitlements that this draft is going to bring. And if there are ways to help offset it, you know, like if somebody were to, let's, I don't know, the cost of, say, a roof or something, and they were, I mean, I'm just thinking on top of my head, to be able to get some type of low-interest, no-interest loan on that, that'll give them maybe another 10, 15 years to be there. I mean, you know, it just, any little bit continues to help. And right now, there's no mechanism for that.
Well, we do have home repair programs. So...
For homeowners or for landlords?
For homeowners. Well, actually, it could, it's, well, actually, it could be either.
Remember, so this is, I mean, this is, you know, this is rental property.
So if it's a rental property, again, we do have, the funding that we have can be used for rehabilitation. But it has to be income-restricted. I mean, this, I mean, other, I don't know, maybe other departments can do things that don't require income restrictions. But our funding generally does.
Right. And I think that's the part that it's tough to say because existing market affordable isn't income-restricted, it just is.
Correct.
And there's a huge amount of that, that people are renting currently. And those are the ones that we stand to lose very quickly if we're not careful. So possibly a way to expand it for the opportunities for that, you know, something.
But I think from a legal perspective, the city could only, you know, provide the funding if it becomes income-restricted. So it might, I mean, so maybe it's market rate now.
Right.
But it would have to become income-restricted for a certain period of time if the city were going to provide any funding.
Well, and then the other possibilities, as mentioned, tax credits or anything. I mean, it doesn't have to come from that funding. It could be something that, well, if you are maintaining a market affordable, then, okay, rather than paying the property tax on what the neighbors that have turned into a, whatever, a fourplex, and this is still a little house, there's a way to rebalance that. I'm just trying to find a way to let it exist as long as it can before it gets torn down to turn into, say, a fourplex or something, but...
Right. This sounds more like a program than a land development code issue to me. Maybe I'm missing some nuance, but...
Okay. Basically, this is to explore options for this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Questions? Commissioner Howard?
It's not really a question, I think it's more of a comment. I think if using non-federal funds, oh, can't do that?
Well, if you're responding to him, you can.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm doing. So as it relates to your proposal, I think that if there was use of non-federal funds, the city could create a fund to supplement or augment or offset costs related to rental housing. I think the concern that was brought up was that most of the times, the, obviously, you're looking at, folks are 80% of the low area median income. So someone who owns multiple rental property, even though they're renting them to folks whose income don't exceed that, they're probably not in that category themselves. So trying to find a way to apply that to folks that are beyond that, or at least trying to pass that opportunity on to the renter itself is probably what the challenge is, so I'm not really sure.
Right. And that brings up another idea. Potentially, it could be the other way around, for the credit to go to the renter to be able to pay. Because, you see what I mean? It goes from one way to the other. But basically, then rents continue to go up because of property taxes, but the renters not taking, but then they would have to qualify, I mean...
Well, essentially, it'd be like the Housing Choice Voucher Program that exists. So it would be the city creating something similar to that, I would say. I mean, at least from the way you describe it.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Commissioner Zar?
Commissioner Shay, were you thinking of this applying to a single-unit structure? Would be like something like a duplex or duplex as well?
I had said for all scales.
Oh, for all scales?
Right. So it could be a single, it could be a duplex, it could be a triplex. I mean, I don't want to limit that. Because some, there are people who have a family that want a house with a little yard, you know, and I don't want to say, sorry, no, not you. But I mean, it's not specific.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Speaking against? Speaking for?
Chair, can you repeat the motion?
Commissioner Shay?
Oh.
It's Shay number three on your...
Let me read it real quick. I mean, I added little things like, create a program for existing affordable rental housing to remain as long as possible for all scales. And then there's the intent.
Commissioner Janes Polido, what are you speaking for?
Yeah, I just appreciate the intent. I'm particularly concerned about the impact of transition zones on existing affordable rental, just because I think there are many, many people who have a rental property that are not your typical landlords. They don't consider themselves landlords first. They're just sort of trying to keep a property either in their family or hold on to it and keep a steady tenant. I was one of those tenants for a really long time. And my landlord never rose, never raised the rent on my property, even though the market was going way high, just because this was a person who wanted to keep the property in their family. And I've known a lot of people, even in the last year, like, I know two divorcees who have sold homes or left homes in some of the single-family neighborhoods we're talking about, and are actually renting affordable homes in central districts in like seven and nine because of this. And so I am concerned about the amount of housing stock that may get tipped, or the incentive to sell a property because the taxes become really unbearable on a property that's not a homestead. So I don't know if, what the, I don't know what the mechanism is. I think the intent is broad enough. And I have an amendment dealing with this issue that I'd bring up later.
Okay. Speaking against? Or neutral? Commissioner Shaw?
So in the comment earlier about really trying to benefit the renter, I guess my concern is if we really pump money, you know, to the landlord, and we improve the house, you know, what do we have? Is really that tool to not have them just up the price and, you know, try to get more money for that unit? So, I mean, I see this would have to be a very, a program that really locks that in and really, I just don't think the wording really captures what I would see as an assurance that we're just not giving landlords money. And then the renters are going to be pushed out once we give them this benefit. So I would, I'm not sure what to do here, but I just, the wording doesn't address my concern.
Speaking for? Or against?
I'll speak against. I mean, this really doesn't belong in the code rewrite. I support the intent. Tax credits are a very complex process. A lot of this, these programs or mechanisms were looked at in the housing blueprint that could work in this city. I think there's lots of challenges with then restricting this market rate affordable, kind of like Ms. Lee said, to continue to be restricted. Yeah, lots of complexity here.
Speaking for? Or against or neutral?
Actually, Mr. Burl. Well, actually, he had Leighton Burl.
Yeah, you haven't spoken.
Yeah, I would support this sort of thing. The LDC, as currently proposed, is going to have a lot of unintended consequences. And one of that is going to be losing affordable, existing affordable housing. And in my neighborhood, and I'm sure in a lot of neighborhoods throughout the city, we have a lot of old apartment complexes and other things like that. One is actually owned by Integral Care because it's very affordable, and they can have people in there well below market rate. And it puts properties like that with a target on their back. So while it may not be an LDC thing, I think it is absolutely something that should be handled in order to mitigate the worst of what the LDC can do to existing affordable properties.
And I'll, speaking for, against, or neutral? Commissioner Seeger?
The intent here is to make sure that while we're providing all this housing for all these people that want to come here, that there is the forgotten sector, and that is the renters. We received some emails recently from renters basically saying, you know, please think of us. And I don't know what the mechanism is, but I do know that if we don't put an emphasis on protecting renters, we will lose a lot of these people. And unfortunately, they could become our next very low or on-the-street people. Renters many times spend up to 70% or more of their income on rent. And many times, it is not a good rental. It's what they could get with the money they had. So I like the emphasis. I don't know what the solution is, but let's keep talking about renters. Thank you.
All right, commissioners, let's take a vote. This is Shay number three. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those against? Any abstaining? All right, that passes 9-2-1. Yeah. Commissioner Janes Polido?
Should have my page ready. Sorry about that. Okay. I would like to go to, should have just gone from the back. This is like when you're looking for your, the classmate that sits next to you in the alphabetical list. Okay. Yeah, I'll just go with number two. So this is provide adequate review and calibration before the adoption of maps. Sorry for the bad grammar there. And I actually want to scratch this adjusted text. We can just talk about it, and I'm happy to submit it for consideration and just for context. But the intent is to provide sufficient time between the adoption of the new land development code and the mapping of the city to make corrections and adjustments as needed. We're finally hearing some of the council members respond to some serious concerns around affordability and flooding, maybe potential discussion of a neighborhood stabilization overlay, as is one of the suggestions in the uprooted study. It's very late to start talking about this because this process is moving so fast. And I've just heard a lot of concern from planners, architects, and certainly overwhelmingly, the citizenry, that this is going so fast, there's not time to really look at unintended consequences and to fully evaluate the implications this has for so many different areas. And so while I certainly don't want to slow down our progress in the, I think, intensive progress that we've made on the code and the criteria, I'm suggesting a lag time between the code text adoption and the mapping. It's almost unheard of to do them at the same time. I know, I think Peter Parkus said it's been done in Denver and Milwaukee. I don't know what the results of that has been. But I had initially said, you know, maybe 180 days. If council determines more is needed, you know, so be it. Evaluate it. Look at suggestion, suggested additions, adjustments, calibrations, some of these other things that we're talking about, programs that might need to be introduced. I don't want to prescribe any timeline. I don't want to prescribe any direction there, but just to provide sufficient time in between the code and the maps.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Shay. Staff?
Brett Lloyd, and I invite others on the team to chime in on this issue as well. I think that it is true that there are definitely code adoption processes around the country that have proceeded in the manner, in the manner that you described, where the text precedes the mapping. I think it would be very difficult for us to change course at this point. We've proceeded, we have, the text is really integrally related to the zoning districts. And it would be very difficult, if not really impossible, as the code is currently crafted, to apply the text while retaining the existing zoning districts that are in place today. So I think the two are so interrelated. So I think the two are so interrelated at this point because of the direction that we've been proceeding, proceeding that it would be, I'm not sure how we would course correct or change the approach at this point along the lines of what you're saying. And Greg, do you have anything else to add?
Just, yeah, just reiterating that they're, they're so interrelated that one doesn't really make sense without the other. And I don't, I don't know how you would implement one without doing both at the same time.
The standards and the text are all tied to the new zoning districts. And even when you're talking about the provisions outside of the zoning code itself, the reference points are all to the zones. Geograph, that's the, those are the reference points for all kinds of different standards, from the sign regulations, there's provisions in the watershed regulations. There's a lot of different provisions that all feed into the zoning map. And so I think it would be really challenging to separate the two in the way you're describing.
Questions? If there's no question, okay, Commissioner Shaw, go ahead.
You know, I think the time to deliberate, and maybe it just needs some rewording, but I think, you know, the code, get it done. But I do think the map, there could be time in that six months to do the modeling and everything that's needed. I, I think it, it's not asking too much for a six-month kind of time period to deliberate after we get the code and really apply those tools in different ways to get it right and get the right map to match the code. I think the tools are there in the code. And I think it's just the implementation of them may take some time. So I'm, I'm kind of supportive of this. And I think it's, it's, we have been a map. We get to see how they work together into this scenario. But as we change the code, we're going to need to maybe make some mapping changes. And I think six months is not too long to, to implement this.
May I offer two other quick points?
Commissioner Shaw, by the way, you're on the process working groups. I'm expecting you to ask a question and not comment in this period.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Brent.
Okay, so the, there are logistical problems with trying to separate the two in the manner that I think is described in this item. But there are two other possible approaches. One of them would be to simply have the entire code delayed for a period of time so it wouldn't take effect. That is one option. And the other option would be to, and I think, I don't think staff would necessarily be supportive of this, but just the directive to, in the transition areas, instead of applying transition area zoning, apply comparable equivalent zoning so that then there could be a planning process to look at future, at later applying transition area zoning. So to not, to not not adopt a new map, but to adopt a new map that makes greater use of, of the more comparable equivalent types of zoning. Recognize, and we recognize that the zoning isn't exactly equivalent, that there are enhanced entitlements into the, in the comparable equivalent zones. But I think there would be a way to adopt a map that is less robust and then do further planning. I think staff, staff believes that the map as provided furthers council's direction. And so I don't think we would be supportive of that. But from a logistical standpoint, that is an approach that I think would move, move in the direction that your amendment points.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw, you still have a couple of minutes? Any questions?
No, I'm, I'm good. I think I'm, well, my question is to the motion maker. Now maybe I missed this. Did you want to include the language or the just the intent?
I was, I was suggesting we could just use the intent and include the suggested text as just additional context, but not as suggested text.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Shay?
I'm trying to see if, okay, so I have an amendment that might be able to piggyback. But at the same time, I don't know if Commissioner Poldido is, because I know you spoke that you didn't want to get too specific about what this could look like. And as Brent Lloyd pointed out, there are some other potential models. And I have an amendment basically to, also to maybe roll out a more limited map and then you, and then you throttle up capacity as we are able to figure things out more. But I think, I like to offer that, but at the same time, I'm also open to leave it vague enough to include like what, you know, Mr. Lloyd had said. So I don't know if you want to add any specific examples or do we, I mean, I don't know. Like I said, I'm okay with leaving it vague and then.
I'm open to an amendment that makes this feasible. If we, if the code and the maps adoption is really inextricably tied together and it's not possible to do code and then mapping, then I would be open to either of the, of the suggestions, either delaying six months to recalibrate, which I have a feeling is probably not popular, or having some kind of planning, more like a small area planning process, a planning process for transition areas. So I think there are still huge unanswered questions about neighborhood plans. I think there's still thousands and thousands of hours of, of resident input that has gone into guiding where growth is appropriate. People are just finding out that they can submit alternate maps. And others are just becoming aware and going like, wait a minute, this wasn't considered. We have a middle school that creates an unconnected street grid. So we have R4 now like way outside of five lots from the corridor. I mean, there's just all these sort of connectivity questions coming up. So if there could be a, a better planning process for that, guiding that growth, I'd be open to that. And if it's, if it needs to be vague, that's fine with me. But I, I do think we need appropriate time to do it right.
So can we say provide sufficient time for planning? I mean, because that's specifically what we want to do. Planning and, I'm trying to think of some word about some type of community input, but I'm also afraid that that might bog it down. We could just leave it as planning. Provide sufficient time for planning between the adoption of the new LDC and the mapping of the city.
I'm a little afraid that that level of vagueness is going to make folks ask what we've been doing for the last
Well, we haven't been planning.
Yeah, I would agree. I don't think this has been a planning process. I think we've been trying to write, to plan growth with code, which is why so many people are confused and unhappy. And people are going, where's the plan here? Where's our plan? Where's our community input?
So I think maybe we should put planning because at the same time, I also have that question because if we're up here and say, well, you're the planning commission. You guys are planning. It's like, no, we're not. We're, we're trying to go through the pieces of the code to see what we could put together to be able to start having a concept of how to plan. So I feel like maybe we should put the word planning in it, you know, as a point.
So I'll make amendment to add provide sufficient time for planning. And that could be however anybody takes it. But I mean. I think if we talked about transition areas, then we could, I think that's more the contentious part. We, we could add that. I mean, I don't think we need to.
Are we beyond questions for staff?
Yeah, really. What's going on?
Yeah. So, and so my amendment is provide sufficient time for planning between the adoption of the LDC and the mapping of the city and make corrections and adjustments as needed.
You're just adding for planning?
Yes.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Seager. Questions?
I have a question for staff. So the mapping procedure that you guys put in the support, the staff report, does that become part of the land code or is that separate? Because there's, you know, there's a lot of detail there that you could then change that's not in the code. So I'm, I'm just wondering if we approved the code, it gives us the tools. But then your mapping strategy could be tweaked as needed based on some council direction or, or other things. So I'm, I'm just thinking, can't you approve the code and then change some of the mapping processes as council may have certain preference changes or?
So the process is laid out that this is a one-time adoption of the new map and the new text. This is not an iterative process that has, you know, let's say a transit priority network changes. I don't know, I'm thinking off the top of my head. Does not enact transition zoning automatically. I don't think that's how this process works. And I think Brent could probably speak better to it, but this is a one-time procedure.
So Commissioner Shaw, if, if, if the council adopts the code and the map as proposed or with, with recommended changes, then certainly afterwards, council could revisit the criteria for transition areas and do further planning and further area-wide rezones, for sure. The map is not set in stone. The criteria that staff has described in the staff report as sort of guiding the application of transition areas are absolutely not part of the code. Those are part of the, just the, the planning process that staff used in trying to give meaning to council's policy direction from May 2. And that certainly is not set in stone and could be revisited through further rezones if, if the code is adopted as proposed. What would be problematic is, again, just so we're on the same page, to adopt the text, which, and then try to leave today's map in place, which is based on zoning districts that are not even acknowledged in the text. And the two just would not sync up. So that would be, that would be problematic. But there are certainly ways of achieving a more moderate map that would then lend itself to having the transition area discussion going forward. There are certainly different options.
That's what I meant because we have a map now that's based on a draft code. We've got a lot of suggestions up here that are going to change that map if council adopts them. And you're going to have to map again. I mean, and you're going to get a, you may get lower capacity and you may have to rethink what you're doing and, and increase, you know, change your mapping strategy and try again. So I just don't think how, I don't see how we're going to get out of the iterative process to hit the sweet spot. That's all.
Yeah, we anticipate definitely, you know, though I think some of the process particulars remain to be fully determined, but after first reading, we would produce a whole new complete map for second reading. Criteria that we're working out with respect to transition areas based on y'all's proposal. And then of course, ultimately, whatever council directs us to do with all those inputs.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Seager?
I have a question, yes. Way back when, six years ago, when IA was approved and we were talking about the revision of the LDC, the recommendation at that time from council was to do a phased rollout of the new code. What would be wrong with trying that? Doing a phased rollout of the new code and seeing, does this work?
I think, I wish, I wish our consultant, Peter, was here, who has experience kind of working on a lot of codes around the country. But from my perspective and, and my experience, having worked in a few different cities, is just that if we were going to do that, if we had determined to do that at the outset, we would have, we could have structured the zoning districts and the text in a way that would have lent itself to that kind of a phased rollout. But at this point, we have whole new zoning districts and whole new site development standards that are all tied together. And so I don't know in terms of, if by phasing you mean sort of retaining some of the current zoning districts and then moving forward in phases. I think that would mean basically having sort of two separate codes for different parts of the city. So we would have current zoning districts and the current site development standards in, you know, which are the code book for one area. And then at the same time, staff are issuing permits and reviewing plans for those areas. They're applying an entirely new code and trying to learn that new code to other areas. It presents a lot of administrative challenges to proceed that way.
I, I understand that, but you're going to have to go through that anyhow. You're going to have to learn all the new code. You're going to have to learn all the new procedures. What's wrong with having a group that perhaps is the rollout phasing testing group that has an area and they work within that? It may create more need for staff, but I think a lot of the suggestions anymore are creating a need for additional staff. And that is the question.
And so I, I guess I would say, there's nothing wrong with that. And other cities have done phased rollouts of new codes. And some haven't, some have done the whole city at once. But the direction from council, they were given an option in the, in, as a part of their direction, if they wanted the code and the draft to come out at the same time or not. And they, and they chose to have them both come out concurrently. And, and the scope of this project has always been citywide. So it would require dramatic rescoping.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Commissioner Kenny?
While I'm happy to, to debate and vote on this amendment, I'm not sure that this is one where we're really going to influence council's decisions about their process one way or another. So can we go ahead and just vote?
Can I substitute or amend my own amendment?
You can.
Okay. So I would, I would just like to amend to say, provide sufficient time to do adequate planning in transition areas and make corrections and adjustments before adopting the new LDC and maps. And then I would include the suggest, what's there in suggested text as just intent, I guess, and context.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Shay. Questions? Commissioners speaking against? Commissioners are?
So I'm going to speak neutral on this. I just wanted to mention one thing. I think there's a conversation here and I've heard in other places, like, you know, we're not, we're just responding to written draft. We're not planning. This is not the work that we're doing and that we have not considered this. And I want to read something from the Imagine Austin Comprehensive Plan adopted in 2013. "To accommodate the increasing diversity of Austin-area households, more housing options will be needed to address our demographic changes. Infill development and redevelopment in centers and long-major roadways will be needed to meet the growing demand for higher-density, closer-in affordable housing. Creating harmonious transitions between adjacent neighborhoods is an important component of the development process." We were literally talking about transition areas we adopted in 2013. We have put thousands of hours into our comprehensive plan that this community came together and worked on. And I think I just want to remind folks, this is not something that started even earlier this year or even when the previous code conversations started. This is something that started before our comprehensive plan. We're talking about a decade of work and commitment this community has put into. And this is where we're saying, let's implement the vision that we had for Austin in our comprehensive plan. And I'm excited that we are at this moment where we can sort of start seeing the fulfillment of that beautiful vision that the people before me at least came here and created. So I'll be honest, I think I hear some of the concerns. But overall, a lot of the work that has gone into this draft in its broader sense has occurred way before we ever got here. And I want to honor the work and the commitment of our community, of our city, of our leaders, past and present, of our commissioners, past and present. So I don't think I will vote for this right now.
Speaking for? Commissioner Yanis Poldido?
I was a participant in Imagine Austin. I was in many of the kindergarten games where you got basically split up. And a lot of folks felt like we were being asked to put new housing right on top of our own houses, but also understanding that we needed to make, we needed to wait, find a way to guide growth. And part of that harmonious transition is ensuring a public process where people are listened to, where they're respected. It's why on page 207, neighborhood plans are to be respected because that is thousands of hours of community input and intention put into guiding growth and development. and intention put into guiding growth and development. Identifying where low-income people are, not guessing. Identifying where affordable apartments and home rentals are and not guessing, because you know those people, because you know where they live. And including all of that data. Harmonious transition means not increasing the danger of flooding, not increasing displacement, not placing additional cost burden on people who are renting and trying to hold on to properties. So I think part of honoring that commitment has to honor how far from that vision in Imagine Austin some of these unintended consequences or intent, or just deemed not as important consequences have become in the transition area conversation. Not every neighborhood is created equal. And I think that we need to honor also the hundreds of hours of testimony and written testimony we've gotten in this recent process that I think points to that conflict.
Speaking against? Commissioner Anderson?
It's uncomfortable. It's uncomfortable trying to catch up to decades of inaction. Every time I see a new development in this city that gets built under our 35-year-old land development code, my heart breaks a little bit because we're leaving so many units on the table. And I talk to folks all the time who are just like, you know, why bother building in Austin? Why bother building under a code that obviously does not want people to build? And you can't build efficiently. We can't build efficiently. Nobody can build efficiently right now. And to me, it just feels irresponsible to wait. And so I can't be supportive of this.
Speaking for? Or against or neutral? Commissioner Littenborough?
Well, we have a 396-unit development that's happening right now in my neighborhood. The people from Vancouver saw an opportunity here in Austin. So I'm not sure that our current LDC has been, you know, such a blight on planning and thoughtfulness. I would agree with Carmen that, you know, that Imagine Austin does talk about harmonious transitions and respecting neighborhood plans and preserving existing single-family areas that are affordable for a lot of people right now. And the idea that we would move forward without taking a breath, I mean, I've, I got onto this board, you know, in the thick of y'all's planning efforts and couldn't even initially figure out what the heck you were doing. Spent a little bit of time and I'm getting a better understanding. But there's been really very little testing, modeling, you know, looking at how this might affect neighborhoods and stuff like that. And I agree that it's the people that live in these neighborhoods that have the best understanding of the fabric of them. And anytime you're planning something, you have to make certain assumptions. But then you have to test them to be sure that they're right.
Speaking against? Or neutral? Go ahead, Commissioner Howard?
So in my career, I can say I've probably been a part of hundreds of neighborhood planning efforts in six states. And the people that you see in neighborhoods today aren't necessarily the people that were there 15, 20 years ago. And not to discount the planning process and the fact that it's deliberative and it's supposed to be, you're supposed to build consensus and develop those, you know, and try to see those actualize. I mean, things change and evolve. I believe that the plans that we're talking about that have been done recently, you know, in terms of overarching plans, really speak to what we see emerging as far as things that need to be addressed. So I mean, I don't want to, they could be seen as being in conflict. I mean, I think there's, there's got to be a way of trying to respect those without making those, you know, I mean, the end-all and be-all in terms of what the vision for the community needs to be and needs to be actualized. So I believe that there's been a very good attempt on the part of staff and all of us, for that matter, to try to figure out how to make this happen. So I believe that either we're going to slow down this process, not adopt a code until we figure out how we, whatever maps we're talking about are going to be consistent with what the text is saying, or we need to just move forward with the, or move forward now with the assumption is that those things are going to be put in place. And I think that's what staff's doing. So I just don't see the need to delay this. And I mean, and we can, again, debate long and hard about what that really means in terms of what plans do represent the community. So I think we should just move forward.
All right, Commissioners, it's time for a vote. This is Yanis Polido, number two. And this is an amendment or a substitute to that number two that you read before. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those against? Any abstaining? Okay, so that fails four to eight. It was a substitute, it failed, so now we're back to the original, which is similar. Do we need to do questions or are we going to take a vote? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, same, four to eight. Commissioners, we've got three more down this line. I'm inclined to stop at the three and look for a vote to keep going. Oh, I'm sorry, to proceed with the final vote. But I'm going to need a motion for that and eight DAs for that. So we'll get to that when we get there. Commissioner Anderson?
I think, thanks to city staff and the city council for putting together that memo. I think I'm done, thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw?
First of all, I want to clarify, and maybe Andrew can back me up on this, that I didn't add a bunch in. Just, so just, I played fair. My previous one from a couple of days ago just didn't get in. So just wanted to put that out there.
We're just giving you a hard time.
I know, everybody does, it's okay. Anyway, so after looking at what's left, I think, and kind of seeing where I might get support, and the tree, and I'm offering people can make amendments to it. But in talking with Keith Mars, who I don't think is here, I really was curious about this metric we had in Imagine Austin about tree canopy and what it meant. It was just a number that's been the same in 2010 and 2014. And all this talk about protecting trees, planting trees, and like, really, we need to know what is the right metric? What should we be gauging if we're taking them out and putting them in? What are we looking for as a metric? And Keith said, well, 35 is kind of where it's been, but really, the best practice is 40. And so I think the general trend should be to try to increase the canopy over time. I'm not giving a time, but I think my, let me get the number here. So number nine reads, "Land Development Code Related to Tree Planning and Protection Should Enable City to Increase Canopy From 35% to 40%. Tree Canopy Measurements Last Taken in 2010 and 2014 Show Austin Tree Canopy Is At 35%. Forestry Department Stays That Best Practice Is 40%." And you can see, I put Keith Mars' quote in there just to reference. And I don't think I need to put up my exhibit. It's just a bar graph that shows where we are currently. So this is very simply, you know, whatever we do with policies and practices is just trying to increase the canopy to best practices.
Thank you, is there a second? Taken by Commissioner Seager, staff?
We do have stronger replanting requirements. I did want to mention that all departments have performance measures that reflect strategic direction 2023, adopted by council. And one of Development Service Department's performance measures that we will be count, you know, in relation to SD 2023 and that we count and report every year is related to preserving the tree canopy and the percentage of tree canopy. Although I could not find the number online, but the report is there and it's part of the department's performance measures.
Yeah.
So I like measures, but measures without a goal are kind of useless. They just show how you're trending. But if we don't know where we're going, it, they really, you shouldn't even measure them. So I think to Keith's point, yes, we have a measure, that's great. But what I'd like to see is what's the goal for all, not just this measure, but anything we're measuring, we need to have a goal. And so his point was, yeah, definitely maintain where we're at, but we need to go up 40% is best practice. I'm just, it'd be good to have a goal as well as a measure.
Okay, questions?
I would like to offer an amendment and in the end say, so Forestry Department says the best practice is 40. I don't know how we're to insert this, but to say, essentially, I want to say, "and equitably spread throughout all city districts." So as I'm looking at the tree canopy map, what I see is East Austin actually has some of the lowest percentages of tree canopy. Whereas West Austin, which is already part of our preserves, actually has high percentage of tree canopy. So as I see a citywide goal, it might not be equitably distributed across. So I'm not sure where to insert this within this, maybe at the end, but essentially, "and equitably spread throughout all city districts."
Is there a second? Second by Yanis Polido, questions? Speaking against? Speaking for? Let's take a vote on the amendment to add that at the end "and equitably spread through all council districts." All those in favor, raise your hand? Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes 11-0. Back to the main motion, any questions?
Chair, can I ask a question about what we just passed? Equitably spread throughout the city, but not all council districts, right?
I had made a motion for all council districts.
Oh, okay.
Which was my way of saying...
Throughout the city.
Throughout the city.
I just want to be clear that it's an equitable approach.
Yeah.
More where we don't have it.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, we're back to the main motion. This is Todd Shaw, number nine. Let's take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand? Any opposed? Okay, that carries 11-0. Commissioner Hempel?
I'm going to check out one of Commissioner Kenny's.
Okay.
Number four, "The Corridors of Equitable Opportunity." So I'm reading in the intent language, and there's some suggested language, but this would just be about the intent. "Consider creating a corridors of equitable opportunity program within the Affordable Housing Bonus Program that aims to establish a mix of market-affordable and deeply affordable units in specific targeted corridors in high-opportunity areas that have historically excluded people of color. The program should use all available tools to create deeper levels of affordability in income-restricted units and more of them." And so this is a position from the Austin Justice Coalition.
Okay. Commissioner Hempel, is the suggested text part of the motion?
No, just the intent.
Just the intent, thank you. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Kenny, staff?
Staff's happy to look at it. I don't think I can offer a recommendation at this time.
Questions? Commissioner Shaw?
I know, you know, I know the, there is documentation, but do we, how would we go about this? Do we actually have documentation that you would feel comfortable with to very specifically identify areas throughout town that meet this criteria? I'm just, I mean, I know it's out there. I just don't know if you're, if we have something definitive that we could go to that would be equitable in a different way, just to make sure that we're applying this in a way that is fair.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
If I could speak to it while they're consulting?
Sure.
So if we're creating a program, there are only certain elements that would necessarily need to be created in code. For example, if the city were to reserve the right to buy down deeper levels of affordability or create more units in bonus programs, there could just be a caveat put into code that says, say, if you're an MS zone or if you're on an IA corridor that the city reserves the right, if you're taking a bonus, to buy down further units. And that's something that we already do in some areas of town now. So I do think there would be some things that would need to be built into the code now. But by creating as a program, the specific targeting and a process for coming up with that and doing some planning could happen post-adoption.
Does staff have a comment as well?
Eric Leek, Neighborhood Housing. So yes, so we, in other density bonus programs, like the TODs, we do have a provision that says that the city has the right to buy down additional units to deeper levels of affordability. So that's certainly a precedent that we have.
Okay, and that's all good. I just didn't know, but do you have a tool, a way documented, a way to actually identify those areas that then historically have excluded people of color? I mean, is that something we can do and feel comfortable that we're, you know, drawing boundaries that are, makes sense? That's all. I'm not disagreeing with the program, I think it's great.
Can you look at the redlining maps in the 1920 Master Plan?
Well, that's what I'm trying to hear from staff. What tools were used to do this?
I mean, we, yeah, we have the data that's in brooded. I don't know, I don't know specifically historical data that would, that would, I mean, we would have sort of, we'd have demographic data, probably at different points in time. And, you know, certainly, there are regulations that would have, that would have had that impact. I don't, I'd have to think about what types of specific data sources we might or might not have related to that. But, I mean, I think this idea of, you know, how do we, how do we make sure to invest in areas that have not had sufficient investment or need additional investment, that the general idea makes sense.
Sure.
Could we just keep it to high-opportunity areas? I mean, I think that's kind of generally what we're shooting for and just leave out having to have staff kind of piecemeal certain parts of the city to identify those that are historically...
So your amendment is striking that have historically excluded people of color?
Yes, and just keep it to high-opportunity areas.
Is there a second? Second by Yanis Polido, questions? Commissioner Thompson?
I guess I'm just confused, so if, and maybe it doesn't make a difference. So a recently gentrified eastern neighborhood, are we going to do that? Okay, okay, I have no problem.
Other questions? Commissioner Seager?
I have a question for the motion writer. Was the intent of this motion to get into certain areas where we perhaps have, that were redlined before, et cetera? Or is it to get variable options within high-opportunity areas?
The intent was to honor the request that was made by the Justice Coalition, which explicitly was targeted at integrating in corridors that historically have been segregated.
Thank you.
Other questions? Speaking against?
I'm not like ideologically opposed to the amendment. I just, uh, I think it's a good idea and I think that, um, the more we can focus the idea and get the Equity Office involved, the better. I I do also think that we have a a historical burden that needs to be spoken to. And, um, I liked that, uh, the original proposal that came from the Justice Coalition, uh, attempted to to speak to to those historical wrongs specifically. Um, I do a- agree that buying down, um, deeper levels of affordability and more units is something that should happen, yeah, in all, uh, high opportunity areas. But I think that there is a opportunity to, um, also have a conversation, uh, in our community, uh, about historical segregation.
Speaking for?
So speaking as a community organizer who's constantly engaged in conversations about the historical racial segregation in Austin, I'm, I, the reason I seconded this amendment is because I see East Austin becoming increasingly whites only. Um, it doesn't have to be explicit. Um, I live in a neighborhood with a deed restriction that, you know, has one of these private restrictive covenants that's way outdated, not enforced. I shouldn't be able to own my home according to this deed restriction. And there's dozens of other people in my neighborhood who violate that deed restriction that has no bearing on our lives whatsoever. Um, but the increasing lack of affordability, the increasing exploitation in gentrifying areas is making them more and more segregated. Um, I very much appreciate the work that's gone into the the policy position with A J C. They bring a national and international history lens, but they don't have a lot of the local history, um, behind a lot of these neighborhoods. And we do have, uh, we we do owe it to our city to address the racist past, but that's been really distorted up here in some of the, some of the things that have been shared in just the sense that it's been an incomplete story. You all may have seen Susan Moffett's corrections. Every council district, with the exception of, I think, District Two, has neighborhoods with these exclusive deed restrictions. Every single one, Districts One, Three, and Four all have them as well. And, um, if we're not looking, the other thing is that East Austin and folks in marginalized communities created complete communities. They created the things that Imagine Austin aspires to because they had to. Um, when East Austin was segregated, it created, um, local economies and people learned how to take care of each other. They created businesses to take care of each other. And many people who are being displaced now from those areas are having to live without the walkable, complete amenities that they actually had before. Um, and so I think high opportunity is important. I just, I think we need to look at the the reality and not just the theory of who's excluded and how.
Speaking against? We're on the Shaw Yanis Pulido amendment. Speaking against or neutral or for Commissioner Shaw?
So I I think this could end up being interpreted in a way that could be more divisive when we're trying to bring more unity to our communities. I understand and I I know that this happened and it's not good, but I just don't think this in itself is going to help bring our community together. And I think, you know, I, you can read the words, but there's just some things in here I think that are going to do more to divide the community than to bring us together. So that's why I'm just trying to keep this broader in what council has already directed is high opportunity. Surely there's a lot of these areas that have gone through this in those high opportunity areas and that I hope, hopefully that kind of captures and and kind of, uh, meets the, uh, that group's intent.
Speaking against or neutral? Let's take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand? All those against? Abstaining? Okay, so that motion passes. That was nine to one. Now we're back to the original motion. Do we need to further discuss or can we take a vote? Let's take a vote. This is Kenny, number four. All those in favor, raise your hand? Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, that's twelve zero. Mr. Chair? Yes.
There's one amendment that we haven't gotten on to here. That's Commissioner Pulido's amendment, um, on asbestos that I I don't think reflects traditional ideological divides or, you know, merits a lengthy discussion, but I do think is is very important, uh, to worker safety. And I wonder if we might be able to, um, to to just take that one up, briefly, uh, and not not let it fall into the pile, the rest.
Chair, can I quickly ask for, so I had a conversation with staff and my understanding is that it is in there, but just in a different way. Perhaps before we take on the amendment, can we have staff respond to that? Is there a need for this amendment or is this something that is substantially covered?
So the asbestos, um, regulations are largely outside of the land development code. There is something in the new land development code that refers to asbestos and the concern is that it not run counter to other things that we have elsewhere in our code. So we are, we're, we're aware of it. We're going to look into it, um, to make sure that our other regulations are not weakened by what was put into the new land development code.
In other words, it's on your radar?
It is.
I'd prefer not to take one out of cycle here.
It's, it's on the radar. Um, I've had people who have been personally touched by this who are very upset about it. And I think we could do it in like two minutes and wouldn't hurt.
We could also start at the end and and pretend like they're going to take two minutes. So I'm not going to allow it unless there's a motion to do that.
And move that we allow it.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Flores? Is there any questions? All those in favor, raise your hand?
Sorry, can I make an amendment before we do this? My amendment is that we start from the start and go do all through all of them. One more roll.
Okay. That would be.
So I think a process that two thirds had to vote to end round robin.
Right. Not to end round robin, to end altogether.
Right.
So we're going to end altogether if we do that motion.
Can we just quickly finish this one that we started and then?
We already finished this one. I meant asbestos is not something we've started yet.
Okay.
So there's a motion by Kenny, seconded by Yanis, seconded by Flores, I'm sorry. And then there's an amendment which doesn't sound like an amendment. But it's a separate motion from Azar to continue another round.
It was an amendment in that if we can do one and two, we can do all of them in two. I think I agree with you. Either we do one or we do all.
Can I make a preliminary inquiry on what the established procedure is at this point? That we might would be deviating from?
It's just going down the cycle. That's the, that's the procedure.
So, uh, the procedure we established is that we continue doing round robin until all amendments are exhausted or?
Until, until there's a motion.
Until there's a motion for a two thirds vote. Okay.
Okay, I feel like we're just extending time. I'll resume my conversation.
Okay.
So until there's a motion with the two thirds vote to end the round robin, we're going to continue doing round robin.
That's correct.
Okay.
Are, is there still a motion? Is your motion still active?
No.
No.
Because it's not.
Is there a motion to end round robin? No, Commissioner Azar, go for it. Is Howard?
If you end round robin.
Oh, you do a motion, okay. Is there a second? All second. Okay, is there questions?
No.
Amendments? Do we need staff to chime in? I'm sure staff wants to go home too, so.
Like to amend the motion?
Go ahead.
To allow consideration of the asbestos amendment prior to the ending of the, or round robin and then consider the asbestos, uh, motion. I believe since that spins the rules, it requires the same two thirds majority.
Okay. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Second by Yanis Pulido. Okay. Are there questions? On the amendment? All those in favor, raise your hand? Any opposed?
If we're gonna go, we're gonna go.
Abstaining? Okay, so that is nine to one. Back to the original motion is to end after this one, essentially. All those in favor, raise your hand? Any opposed? Abstaining? Okay, not all hands went up, so. This is to end.
End round robin.
Yeah.
End as.
But we will then vote on the code itself after that?
Yes.
Okay.
No, then we go to the.
Then we go to asbestos, then we go to the code.
Right, then we vote on the code.
All those in favor, raise your hand? Against? Abstaining? Okay, so that is ten one one. Asbestos. Commissioner Yanis Pulido?
There's an extremely well researched, uh, paper that was sent to us by, I'm forgetting the guy's name. You can reference it. I, we probably shared, hopefully shared it with staff, but it references several local ordinances. And I typically hear architects say, well, there's already state regulations about this, but these were local ordinances that were made stricter and to avoid loopholes and to ensure that, um, that inspections and reports are conducted by certain more rigorous, um, measures. And so we just want to ensure that we don't lose any of that review or scrutiny in the new land development code or, um, criteria, um, especially considering that we may be encouraging a lot more demolitions of old structures.
I have an amendment that I think might just offer a little bit more clarity.
Okay, let me get a second and I will do your amendment.
I'll second.
Okay, go ahead. Commissioner Kenny?
Amend the draft code as necessary to not weaken, uh, local ordinances specifically relating to asbestos. And so this way, if it is already accommodated and the check reveals that, fine. If it needs some, a tweak, then that can do it.
Is this an amendment or a substitute?
It's a substitute.
Thank you. Second by Commissioner Flores. Are there questions? Staff want to chime in? Go ahead.
Yes, we just want to chime in briefly on a couple of things. Um, the code was, the revised code and and we have law here can, who can speak to it as well, but I think I can just broadly cover it. Um, the code was amended to conform with state law. Um, the provisions that were taken out are not, um, helpful to us and and we have the authority to implement state law. And and I think there was some confusion created by having provisions in there that sort of were meant to implement state law, but were worded differently. And then secondly, and this is a fundamental point, we proposed a code that eliminates the exception for the exemption for interior demolition permits. So currently, the code provides an exception for where you don't have to get a demolition permit for interior demos. Um, and so by removing that exception, we are ensuring that there will be a greater consideration of asbestos. So that change in and of itself is a substantial improvement with regard to dealing with asbestos issues.
So, Mr. Lee, can I ask, um, the language that is in the, uh, the proposed substitute that says, make sure that the draft code does not weaken local, um, ordinances directly related to asbestos?
That's fine. We, I just wanted to provide context because we we take the issue very seriously. And we just wanted to let you know the steps that we have taken in removing the interior demo exception to really help protect workers and people from asbestos.
Understood and appreciated. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, speaking against? Speaking for? Let's take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand? Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carries twelve zero. Now we're back to the main motion and this is the motion to end the round robin. We need a two thirds vote for this to go. If not.
I believe you already took that motion.
Oh, we did? Oh, sorry. We took that vote. That's right. Okay, never mind. Okay. So now we're looking for a final motion to wrap all of this up. I want to acknowledge all of the hours and hours and months of work that staff has done on this. And acknowledge the hours that the working groups have put into this. The hours that certain commissioners have put in above and beyond. All of staff, Andrew and others. Um, so we're going to do that. Brent, go ahead. Did you want to address us?
Chair, Chair Kozie, I'm sorry to keep jumping up, but I just want to remind you that we do have, uh, our request to go through briefly the supplemental staff report, which has some items in it that we would like you to consider.
Thank you. Go for it. I'm gonna put a clock on though. Five minutes.
Okay, um, better start going. October twenty fifth, we released a supplemental staff report that summarizes changes that we are recommending to the October fourth draft based on a variety of feedback from, uh, a lot of community meetings and a lot of community engagement. We asked your support for the supplemental staff report. And so to that end, I'm just broadly going to summarize the different components. Um, page three through nine of the report, um, which was provided to you, um, has several recommended text amendments. A lot of these are housekeeping. A lot of them are in the nature of clarifications, corrections. Um, the ones that are substantive, I think, would meet with this commission's approval based on my observation of your amendments over the last several days. We propose eliminating the allowance for type three S D Rs in the transition areas. We propose lowering impervious cover with for one and two family residential, um, in the transition areas. We propose, um, a number of other changes, eliminating the S O S amendments from the October fourth draft, um, in recognition of the fact that there's a a strong desire to have that go be considered separately. So I think there are a lot of specifically described amendments, um, that we're happy to answer questions about, but we ask, we ask for your support. We also propose broadly, uh, changes to, that we're going to flesh out in a supp, a subsequent report, changes to the transition areas to reflect a lot of the considerations that you all have addressed. And I think your amendments will help inform our proposal going forward. Um, and then I think finally, there are two other items I want to just touch on. And the first is Appendix A and A one to the supplemental staff report are a growth concept map amendment. And, uh, Anique Bode can speak to that.
Yeah, in the supplemental, we lay out pretty clearly the map amendment to the growth concept map in Imagine Austin. Uh, we're adding a map, which you can see on the screen, to the growth concept series as well as associated, uh, text amendments, recognizing transition areas, further recognizing transition areas, um, in the growth concept of Imagine Austin and realizing them, uh, with this update. So I will, I will add that this map would supersede exceed, uh, the existing neighborhood plans to the extent of conflict, uh, and that the map that is shown here today is, um, is a correction to the map that was in the supplemental. And this is actually the map that we would ask for your recommendation along with the text amendments in the supplemental amendment from October twenty fifth, um, to forward to council.
Okay. Thank you.
Exhibit B, uh, which is the, Appendix B, rather, which is the final item I'll speak to, is just a proposed, um, proposed revisions to the signage chapter, uh, that's included in the draft code. In these amendments, um, if you have questions about them, uh, we have Erica Lopez from the Law Department can speak to it. But just very broadly, they provide, um, some limited allowances for additional off premise advertising on right away installations and in other areas as well. Um, so that's our supplemental. Please feel free to ask us questions.
Thank you, Brent. All right, commissioners, there's a couple of ways we can do this. We can take a base motion that recommends the draft from October fourth. Yeah, we're gonna get, yeah, we'll get there. So a general motion, um, that recommends the draft from October fourth. And then all of our amendments that we've done on the several days that we've met, which was, um, I thought there was one more than that. October 29th was the first one, 29th and then 4th, or 29th, October 29th, November 5th, November 6th, November 11th and today, November 12th. So all of those. And then the supplemental report, we could do that as a base motion and then we could split it if we need to, we could split it even further if we need to, just a suggestion. So now would be a good time for, for a base motion. Commissioner Azar?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the draft of the land development code from October 4th. The amendments passed by this commission on October 29th, November 5th, November 6th, November 11th, November 12th, along with staff supplemental report.
All right, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hempel. I'm going to quickly go to staff and make sure we've addressed all of the points. Okay, thank you Brent. Uh, questions for staff? Now would be a good time to ask questions about the supplemental report or other questions and make your comments. So we'll go, go a round of questions. If there's no objection, we'll go around of questions, um, based on our previous rules, which is four questions. And then we'll go around of, um, comments, just in general, if there's no objection.
Chair Commission, ladies and gentlemen, before we do that, if you consider extending the time?
Thank you. Is there a motion to extend the time? We're at 9:49 right now.
10:30.
10:30, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right. So any objection to four questions? And then, uh, three minutes of comments for everyone.
Okay.
I think we might need more questions, but should we start and see? I'm just worried, I think there's going to be more to this motion than we think once, once we start asking questions.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, at this point, are we just looking at the land development code text and not the map? Is that, or is your motion the text and the map?
Everything that was released on the 4th, which was both the text and the map.
Okay. I, I would like to amend and just consider that text with our amendments.
Okay.
Exclude the map from the motion.
Okay, so yours dividing.
I'm dividing, yes.
Dividing the map out of it, okay, is there a second for dividing? Second by Commissioner Shea, are there questions? If there's no questions, let's take a vote, all those in favor of dividing the map, please raise your hand. All those against? Uh, abstaining? Okay, so that motion fails four to eight, unless I missed someone, no. Okay, so now we're back to Azar, uh, Hempel, kind of for the broad motion. Other questions?
Did we, okay, I'm getting tired. Did we have any conversation about the proposed amendment? I'm just.
The amendment?
Yeah, for and against, I'm sorry.
Just with the map in text? For the map in text?
Yeah, to remove the map, I'm just, did we go, just offer for and against?
I asked for questions, did I ask for for and against or no?
You did?
Thought I did. I may not have.
All right, um.
Okay. Uh, questions? Yeah. Four questions, four commissioners with questions, you have five minutes for each question, just, yeah.
No, you don't get four.
I have a lot of, that's fine. Where, what is happening to the requirement for neighborhood plan amendments?
Anique Bode, the neighborhood plan amendments outside of the transition areas would still be, would still apply and the process would still be the same.
Yes, and the, uh, the procedural requirements that are in current code with regard to amending the neighborhood plans as well as the contact team enabling provisions are all carried forward in the code. And any landowner applications, uh, or city applications to rezone, um, individual areas outside of the transition areas would have to comply with the FLUM or go through the amendment process. And likewise, within the transition areas, any amendments to do a use that, that is sort of, other than sort of the, the multi-unit residential that's allowed under R4 and RM1. Uh, any other sort of request to do a rezone for a commercial use or something like that likewise would have to go through the FLUM amendment. So the effect of this amendment, amendment really is just to provide a solid foundation for the transition areas in Imagine Austin, um, and, and have that be binding. But in all other respects, the, uh, the neighborhood planning process is affirmed both within and outside of the transition areas.
Wait, you said, I'm sorry, just that last line is affirmed both within and outside?
Yeah, so if somebody came in within the transition area to do, um, I don't know, like a neighborhood commercial, mixed use one or something like that, that would require a FLUM amendment.
Oh, beyond what's proposed in the remapping, got it.
Did you have additional questions?
I do, but is it taking up other?
No, you, you've got five minutes.
Oh, okay. Has there been or will there be any kind of impact analysis on the potential loss of naturally occurring affordable housing in transition areas? Both in gentrifying areas and in high opportunity areas? And how are we going to know how much, I mean, loss, basically? I'm, I'm asking as, you know, representative of a district with a lot of renters and a lot of old buildings and structures and I'm, I'm concerned that we're going to get more economic segregation from transition areas the way that they are currently planned.
I would, I would say that.
Erica's coming up, but I would also say that to the extent that we have metrics in our strategic direction 2023 or the strategic housing blueprint that speak to market rate affordable, um, would be things that, i- if we're tracking that in any way, shape or form. But I don't know if there's anything specific to the code that we've laid out, but Erica can add if there's more.
Yeah, we, we don't have those metrics. Um, I mean, we, we do know that low-income renters are already being displaced from the city, um, but don't have specifics about any potential impacts of the code.
Chair, I, I have another amendment.
Are you done with questions? Do you have, you have another minute and a half? I'll take your amendment right after this.
Yeah, I, I have a lot of questions, but I don't think there's really answers to them right now, so I'm going to yield the rest of my time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Shaw?
So I, I'm sorry, I'm just, I feel like we need more discussion on this and I know maybe others are just ready to get out of here. But the amendment is, uh, to delay PC approval of the maps until such time is, uh, the PC amendments demonstrate achievement of the housing, environmental and other goals as outlined, as directed by council. So it's just, uh, we've got a whole lot of things we've done and, and asked for staff to go do. And I think they're great ideas, but we have no idea what they're going to do to the map. No idea. Uh, maybe good, could be bad, but we've, council has given us a lot of metrics on environmental housing and we don't know what we've done. So I, I think it's really not fair to vote on a map that we have no idea what it's going to look like and if it's going to achieve our goals. So I think, um, you know, we weren't able to get any modeling done like we were the last time and I think it's just fair to this group to really see the outcome of our hard work. But how can we vote on a map if we don't know what the yield is and, and if, are the ICs going to be there? I don't, I don't know, I know we put some safeguards in, but I really, I would like to see the results of our hard work. And, um, that, so that's why I'm suggesting this.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Shea? Questions?
Can I ask questions? Just to clarify. So I completely agree with, with the intent of this, but, um, my question and concern, you know, and I'm just kind of thinking is, the map itself is an iterative process. And it's, so what we're approving is not the final map. That's my understanding because, I mean, staff has said that, you know, and even you, as mentioned, that this, this will probably have to go back again to get recalibrated, especially with all the new tools that we have created. I don't know, maybe we increased the capacity, maybe we decreased it, but there's a lot of great ideas that we've proposed that increase capacity and decrease, um, I don't know where it falls, you know? So I agree in the sense that we do need another map, but what we're approving, no, I don't think anybody's saying this is the final map. This is an iterative map and I think, um, staff is saying that as well. So I'm supporting it because, I mean, it's, it's not the final map, it's a process map. But, you know, it's, it's not the final one we're going to approve.
And your question is?
Right?
Let's, let's, uh.
I, I don't, at some point, there's, the train's going to stop and there's going to be a map that council approves. So I'm actually, if it is an iterative process, well, let's get an iteration that's based on PC amendments. That's the iteration I want. And then council can have their iterations, but how about, I mean, we should get at least one iteration.
Speaking, uh.
A question.
Question, go ahead.
This is the motion maker. What timeframe do you think that this iterative map should be presented to Planning Commission?
So I think I would have to ask staff how long it would take to create a map based on our recommendations.
Well, they said they're going to do one after first reading.
Before third.
So we're saying that.
We want to see it.
It's not my turn to ask, so.
Um, the plan that's been laid ahead of us is to create the next iteration of the map, as mentioned before, as part of post-first reading, pre-second reading. And that will integrate all of the amendments passed through this body, along with everything that's passed as part of first reading from council.
Questions? Speaking against? Commissioner Thompson?
First, I, I think it is iterative. When we look at the transition zones, uh, those, you know, in, in my mind, sort of were a direct response to some of the recommendations that PC made before, where we sort of laid out, well, for the first block after a corridor, it should look like this, this should be the zoning for the second, um, block, it should look like this. A- and so I see that as a, sort of a direct response to the recommendations. We, no matter what we recommend, staff basically doesn't do anything to council, except others say, we recommend, you know, we agree with that recommendation or we don't. So any recommendations, they're not actually going to do the map until council approves our recommendations or doesn't approve the recommendations. And then council approves the final draft of, of the map on second reading. So I, I just don't see that there's a process for it.
Speaking for?
Those that were on the mapping working group last time, and I think Connor Kenny led this, is you, we asked for very specific things out of that group that we got, we got modeled and we got tested. And it yielded great things that we were able to see before we voted. And so I think there was, uh, uh, you know, we had those resources, which we don't now. So I just think it can be done, it's just, uh, it just has to be put in the, in the mix as far as an extra iteration, uh, before it goes to council. But that's all, it, it's just another iteration.
Speaking against?
I would love to see the modeling, I would, I would love to see the map. Uh, but I think for all of these process amendments, um, it's helpful to, for us to remember what our place in this process is. Uh, we are making recommendations to council, um, that is, who are going to take them or leave them. While we are nominally approving a map and approving the code, really what we're doing is, is sending them recommendations we'd like them to take up, um, when considering the staff draft. That may not be de jure what it is, but I, I think that's what it really is. So, um, I, I just think it bears to have a little bit of, of humility about what our role is here and to be as helpful as we can in the process. And to realize that the, um, the train is not going to wait for us to be, um, fully satisfied with everything and, and to just, you know, serve the people of Austin best as we can. And I know there are different opinions about how that could be done. But, uh, I, I imagine there might be other amendments to this motion to, uh, come back again or get more information or, or, um, delay the process. But, um, really, it's, it's, that's, and it's in council's hands, um, it's, it's not in ours. So, uh, it's, it's time to love this code and let it go.
Speaking for? Speaking against? I'll speak against, I'll echo those comments by Commissioner Kenny. We wanted a draft four map and a four A and a four B back then too, and we, we didn't get that. We just sort of let it go, knowing that, um, council was going to take it up from there. And sort of like Commissioner Kenny said, we've, we think we've spent a lot of time on this and put forward some, some good amendments. And what happens to the map, happens to the map, we can still continue to be engaged, sort of with council and, and our council members that have appointed us. So this is not, not, not the end of our input, I would hope. That's my position. Any other commissioners speaking for? We've got three against, let's take a vote, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those against? Any abstaining? Okay, so that fails four to eight. Back to the main motion, Azar Hempel motion. And we've had two questions, we've got two more. These can be questions to staff about the supplemental report or any other concerns. Okay. Commissioners speaking against? This is kind of a very broad, general motion moving this on to council.
So those, um, that will vote against should speak now?
Go ahead, Commissioner Ken, uh, Commissioner Seeger?
While there are some very good parts of the new land development code, especially when we're looking at, uh, our watershed, our infrastructure and trying to protect from the flooding. And there are good, uh, recommendations on trees, at first I didn't think so, but then I came to realize that, uh, some trees will be lost because of their age, et cetera. But, uh, trees are very important to our community and we should do everything to protect them. That was the good part. Where I think that we really missed the boat is that when we set out in the beginning, we were told that what is needed in Austin are affordable homes, especially homes for those of low to moderate wage earners. And that's where I believe that we missed the boat. I don't think that we took care of that segment to create enough income restricted housing. I think that we were caught up in, let's getting all these new units out. And we forgot the one most important thing is taking care of the disenfranchised. I think we could have done better with not increasing the entitlements as high as they went and making the bonuses more attractive. And by doing that, it would have to be that, uh, by right entitlements were not as great as they were. We heard that we needed the by right entitlements or else no one would build it. Well, I think that if we perhaps had a different structure, and I don't know what it is, for the income restricted, that perhaps we could have achieved that goal. And that is my biggest regret, is that we didn't see the way to creating enough income restricted housing. When you lose your housing, there's only one place to go and I think we all know where that is. And let's. only one place to go, and I think we all know where that is. And let's try to stop that. And hopefully, we have a lot of developers and builders that will step up to that challenge and find a way to make these developments affordable for everyone. The developer needs to make a profit or else he's not going to build it. However, it needs to be beneficial to the person that is going to come and rent the home. And I'm not saying units. I think that units desensitized our, our goal. I think that we should have all been, always been talking about creating homes. And that is it.
Okay, commissioners speaking for or neutral? This is your chance to take your three minutes to say, comment or speak for or speak neutral.
Can I have a clarification on the motion?
Go ahead.
So when you said the amendments that we've create, we've put forward, are we in agreement that it is going forward with our votes? So we can see how many people, it's not just what pass, it's actually, you can see the degree of support or not support?
Okay. That's my understanding. Does staff want to comment on that?
I mean, and I think that's, it's being recorded that way right now. And so...
Yes, we're, we're recording the votes, for sure.
Okay.
Chair, can I offer just, this sounds like we're closing out last remarks, in a way. Just to give everyone a chance, do we need to vote on a motion to, I think there's only a certain number of for and against, just in case other...
We're going to take as many as we need.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So whoever wants to jump in, jump in. Commissioner Howard, then Azar?
So I feel very privileged to be coming in at this time. I mean, a part of this process, I thought it was very dynamic. I think that, you know, I said I've worked in other cities, I've worked on planning processes. And I think just to see it come full circle was pretty exciting for me. I think developing a comprehensive plan and trying to put that into practice by developing these components. I know we started with the strategic, well, with the Strategic Housing Blueprint, and then shortly thereafter, I was able to look at the Strategic Mobility Plan. I think we talked about the Parks Plan as well. So I feel like we've come full circle with the Land Development Code. I do believe it's, it's probably 80% solution because it's not been tested. And we can't design a code for every likely scenario. But I believe that it really does a good job of addressing many of the concerns that folks have had. And I think that we'll see modest, modest changes ideally or likely in the future. I'm going to suggest a biennial process for looking at the Land Development Code in the future, so that we won't have this gargantuan hurdle to look at the Land Development Code after years of being in existence. So I did something similar when I was with the City of San Antonio. But I do believe that this has been a really good process. Very happy to be a part of that. And I think that I commend the staff and my colleagues for doing such a great job. And again, I was very happy to be a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Howard. Commissioner Azar?
So I think I'll echo what Commissioner Howard said. I do feel privileged to be here. And I'll be honest, I think I'm excited to see everything that our community has accomplished in this draft. I agree that I think we're not 100%, but we have really come so far in terms of what we have achieved, from before our comprehensive plan to our comprehensive plan, to the years after, going through the first code, next process, and then this LDC draft. And I really think we have achieved a lot out of affordability, you know, related empirical stuff that we've set for ourselves, from our blueprint, from Imagine Austin. And I'm happy to see that we have achieved quite a bit. But I also see that there is also a need to do this in a timely way. We have seen, as, you know, I brought a lot of stuff around compliance and monitoring and sort of these tweaks around how do we make things effective? Well, we've seen things sort of slip through the cracks over the years. And we've always been waiting to do a lot of this work within the code. So I'm happy to see that that works moving forward, so we can actually have robust affordability programs in this city, knowing, of course, that there are other programs outside of the scope of the LDC that are required to address our concerns here. I think I agree. I want to thank, you know, council, past and present, all the fellow commissioners, definitely everybody within my affordability working group, who I think definitely kept me on my toes. And of course, community members who put in, I know, countless hours into this process, starting with the work on Imagine Austin. And I think I personally have really tried to ensure that we have the maximum number of affordable income restricted units, as many as possible, wherever we have the opportunity to ensure that we have more housing and that's dispersed throughout the city. So we're getting housing choice in high opportunity areas. And then also ensuring that we're not putting displacement pressures on areas that are going through gentrifying, gentrification. And I think I just want to mention, I feel like in terms of my own work, I, and I want to thank my affordability working group folks for letting me do this as well. But, you know, my work has been informed by our public workshop that we did right here in City Hall, all the stakeholders that have reached out to us. We met them over a weekend and all the emails and other stuff that I've gotten. I paid special attention to the anti-displacement task force recommendations, the Community Development Commission recommendations. There were folks sitting in the back. I want to appreciate the work that they had done last year on this, the Code Next SWAT analysis, Equity SWAT analysis. And then definitely, you know, as has been mentioned, my work with affordable housing folks and community members and, you know, community advocates within the city. So again, I think I'm just excited to see all of those voices, countless hours and work come together. And I think we're in a position where we can pass this on to council with a lot of certainty and hope, that I think we're moving in the right direction. And I think I really trust our council to take this to where it needs to be. And I just want to thank you all.
Thank you. Who wants to go next? Commissioner Shaw, then Hempel?
It's kind of like sad. I'm, if I get teary, I just, you know, give me a few minutes. But no, I really do, I want to thank the staff and, you know, the PC and especially my work groups. We, I think we did a lot of good work. And, community members, you know, my eyes have been open to a lot of different perspectives by being up here and working closely with you guys. And I've met with staff and even some of the developers really understand what makes projects work. And it's really been a learning process for me, and I appreciate it. And staff, you've, gosh, I just know the hours you put in. It's, you've done a great job. So anything what I say from this point on is, you know, I think we've done wonderful work. But the Land Development Code, I think the text, and I'm going to, I think we've created a wonderful toolkit with our amendments. But, you know, I think, I wish we could have separated out the map. We didn't, because I can't support them together, the map. There's just too many areas where I think we've over pushed transition areas further into these residences, even in vulnerable areas. And I think it could have been used, I use the analogy of the sculpture. We've made the, you know, done the big, taken the big pieces out, and now it's some of that fine tuning. You know, council recognized that there should have been, there are context sensitive criteria. Staff, I think when I challenged, asked questions about additional concept sensitivity in mapping, agreed that they could maybe use some additional, some of that in some of these areas, residential TPNs just got pushed too far. So I, I love what we've done. I think it's good, but I, it's all in one package, so I just can't support it, given we've got this map that I really think needs to be improved. But great work, you guys. I do appreciate the time we put into this. And I think we've definitely given council something better on the, on the text code, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hempel?
Well, this is my first time serving on a commission like this, so I appreciate all of the mentoring and the learning curve that you've allowed me to do. Really appreciate staff's time in answering questions with my being very green and new at this. And I know you guys are spending holidays and all of your hours, so thank you so much. I'm really excited to see where this is going. Things like the functional green, the green infrastructure, a really keen eye on impervious cover and what watershed is doing for the flooding issues. And I know that's a conversation that's going to continue on after code is adopted and we're working through to keep on fine tuning it. I'm, I'm so excited to see, I've been in Austin for a decade now, and I know that the code has been in the works for almost that long. And being a citizen of Austin, looking forward to a new dawn of code. I want to just relay, I'm working in a nearby city, and the, on a plan for them. And the piece about affordability that this code is addressing is incredible. And this neighboring city, the way that they're talking about planning for affordability is, it will just take care of itself. And going through this process, I mean, we all know that that's not the case. And so Austin and the work that we're doing, that staff is doing, that council is doing, is really helping to shoulder a lot of what the region is kind of just pawning off. And so I'm really appreciative of this work that, especially on the affordability piece that everybody's put in. So thank you.
Okay, who's next? Commissioner Kenny, then Thompson?
Just want to echo what everyone has said. I am continuously impressed by every member of this commission and think that the way that we have navigated these issues while maintaining civility and productivity is really a model. And while everybody, I think, poured a ridiculous amount of time into this thing, I do want to especially recognize commissioners Azar, Thompson, Hempel, and Shaw, who I think poured just enormous amounts of time into this, went above and beyond. And I'll just say that I think that our current code has been a disaster for this city over the last 20 years. Our congestion and sprawl and affordability and displacement and gentrification and vehicle miles traveled and carbon production has gone in the wrong direction for a generation in the city. And the Land Development Code is going to be a real key in trying to turn the boat around. It's far from the only tool and can only do so much, but it's a critical tool. And it's why I don't feel as apprehensive about letting something go that is not perfect, because the cost of an action is so high. And what we have seen happen to our neighborhoods has just been so devastating, especially in certain parts of town. The, you know, Austin that, you know, I grew up with and, you know, I am priced out of the neighborhood that I grew up in. And the overwhelming model of development that we've seen in this city has been very large, single-family homes. And there has been no upzoning needed and no code change needed for that to be the dominant model of development in this city. And so I think that this is a huge step in the right direction. I look forward to getting it better as time goes on. And I'm, I think the thing I'm most proud of that this commission has done is that, except we're specifically directed by council, this commission directed, really focused our energies on making the whole code oriented around affordability. Could probably be better, and it's not enough for what we need to do. But when it comes to entitlements, to impervious cover, to site plan reviews, to changes in zoning, to mapping, it's been all around of affordability, which is appropriate because it's what we desperately need. And I'm also especially proud of the amendment that we passed that said that we recommend that any changes that we made and that council made should not reduce the overall capacity and should, and any changes should put it in the high opportunity areas. I think that's enormously important and a great position that we staked out. So my thanks to everybody, staff and commissioners.
Commissioner Thompson?
I'd also just like to thank all the commissioners and all staff and the public. I would also like to give a special shout out, I think, to the city manager, who this round, before we started this round, sort of, you know, sat with council and said, what, you know, what, where are we going? What exactly is the picture? And came up with this idea of, well, let's, you know, really put what we can on the, on the centers and on the corridors, you know, from within the corridors, from outside the corridors, a couple of blocks into the neighborhoods, we'll put, you know, four plexes and six plexes. And, and don't give anybody extra entitlements beyond that, unless you're going to get some affordability bonus. And just, you know, and I think staff did a great job of, of keeping to that, you know, that picture. And so, you know, that plus all the just great changes in the code in terms of impervious cover, in terms of, you know, the functional green space, all of the extra bits, you know, the smaller block sizes for large blocks and all of the connectivity and, and, you know, the ways that we're going to get down those vehicle miles traveled, et cetera. So I'm just, just really happy that we got this through. And yes, it's not perfect. But, you know, council's going to spend lots of time on it still, and we'll be very excited to see what happens.
Commissioner Shea?
So I want to tell everybody, tell you guys how much it's an honor to actually be able to go through this journey with you guys, including staff, all the consultants, as well as working through with the community and any other consultants. I mean, to have, to be able to be, for any city, but to be able to put this brain power together, start thinking through different ways to achieve the vision that we want, is absolutely amazing. And I think we have some incredible ideas. And it's definitely developing the toolkit. The concern I have going forward, I mean, I don't think what we created is the end product. I think the product that we are putting together with our amendments is, you know, does require another set of filtering. Because we all went through coming up with solutions for a specific thing, but how do these all start working together? We don't know. And I don't think we, we're even given the opportunity or the time to figure that out. So I hope council is going to, and staff will take what we have created and start figuring out how these things can work. Some things might work and, by itself, but it might make something else not work. So I implore everybody, you know, moving forward to, to not lose sight of the intent of why we were creating this. And from the affordability and how we were trying to achieve affordability, not just by getting more units, but there was also the quality of the units, the smaller units, the pricing of it, you know, renters, the, the balance with transportation, how all that meshes together. Don't lose sight of that. If you take any one of our amendments or anybody's just reaction to one thing, it might not work. So you need to look at it as a package, zoom out and zoom back, zoom back in. The other thing is, I don't know if we even had time to look at the honesty of the modeling. I've seen, you know, one side say this, another side say that, and it's confusing to me. And for me, you know, I could look at it, you know, having been in the business, I can look at it and kind of make my own judgment. But the, for the community and the public, it's difficult. So at this point, as we hand it over to council, you know, I hope staff and council will continue to have that honesty with the community of what this stuff really looks like and what the impact truly is. The other thing is, you know, I do have concerns with, with the mapping, like Commissioner Shaw. I understand it is iterative process, but if it's one of those things, we have to approve it as it is, I don't know. But I think, you know, through, you know, hopefully council will see what we've seen and also make those considerations. Because at this point, I think it is out of our hands. But besides that, I think we are all off on the proper direction. I'm not saying that we're done. So that's, while I'll probably be supporting this. Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Flores?
I too want to reiterate what everyone else has said about everyone here on the commission. It's been a very, it's been a great process. I think the chair and the process working group for coming up with the rules and sticking to them, and everyone here sticking to those rules. I think it really helped us focus and get through all of these amendments and make sure that we had that robust discussion. But we still were, you know, we weren't here until three o'clock in the morning. So thank you for that. The other thing I want to say is, you know, on the, the last go around, I was on the zoning and planning commission where... I was on the Zoning and Plating Commission where we didn't even give ourselves a chance to have this kind of discussion. So I really appreciate all that you have done here. And I also want to point out to staff that they've done a great job. And you're still going to continue doing a great job in, in advising council as, you know, taking our recommendations and, and helping council get through all of that. The one thing that I'm very proud of with staff is that you took ownership of this. I've seen one consultant, there may be others behind the scenes, but staff is here and you are here defending and helping us understand the code itself and the draft that we have before us. And I just want to thank you for that.
Who's next?
Oh, we do. Chair, we need to extend.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to extend?
Move to extended.
We also, we also need to do the 2020 calendar, so how about 11?
Move to extended 10:55.
Okay. Is there a second? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay. All right. Anderson or Yanis Pudile?
We had a very civil walk to get food, by the way. And on that note, I, I just want to say it, this is also my hometown. I've, I lived in a big city. And, and I watched this grow into a big city that's still a small town with growing pains. And the absolute thing I love the most, well, there are two things I love the most about Austin. The people and the land. And I've actually grown to appreciate how the land, I think, actually works on people here. I think part of the magic of this town is there is, there is a space and there is a natural environment and there is a vibe that actually allows for reflection and curiosity and understanding. And I've seen that in almost everybody in this process. And I also just, I'm so proud of, of the public for coming out. I think the highlight of this whole process for me was the, was the October 26th hearing. Because to me, that is the most educational qualitative data that we get. And that is community planning. That's what community planning should be. I want to express my gratitude, also second the gratitude toward the staff for spending long hours, including Andrew Rovetta and, and I, and fellow commissioners. And Chair Kazi for making this a fair process where I think a lot of people from all sides felt like they had a seat at the table and things were well managed. I will be voting against this, submitting this code as is right now. For many reasons, in particular, the city manager said this should move at the speed of trust. And I think that went off the rails a while ago, in part because we didn't have good visuals. Because community members who tried desperately to get information or to come to conclusions, well-researched conclusions, were accused of giving misinformation, often inaccurately, instead of being given information, instead of being given visuals, instead of being given real modeling and testing. I'm particularly against this vote right now because for years, people who have been facing displacement, in particular, people of color from the Eastern Crescent, from East Austin, have been asking for policies to mitigate displacement. The People's Plan was one of those. And it was requested time and time again that we implement anti-displacement measures before we adopt a new code, and that hasn't happened. The People's Plan was endorsed by the Mayor's Own Task Force on Anti-Displacement. Many of the recommendations came from the previous Task Force on Institutional Racism. And those tools have been ignored. People keep saying, you know, the code won't achieve our deeply affordable units. We have other tools. But you're basically telling people who are in danger of displacement to get in line for Section 8. And I am concerned with the amount of environmental degradation that we may see, particularly the heritage tree ordinance. So I'll be voting no.
The staff team is amazing. City Council memo is amazing. I, I've shared with all of you all that I was a high school dropout when I moved to Austin. I was 18 years old. I got out of Atlanta, I was in a lot of trouble in Atlanta. I was a high school dropout there. I was like, yeah, I'm gonna go to school in Austin, everything will be great. Started to go to high school here and I dropped out. And I don't know if I ever could have found my way but for the fact I could always find really cheap rent in this city. From '97 to 2003, until I finally stumbled back into getting my GED and getting into college, I found really cheap rent, rent that is impossible to find now, today. And I think about all the people who are 18-year-old, 18-year-olds out there, just being dumb kids, that don't get that same opportunity because we have such an inefficient land development code that prohibits efficient land development. And that's criminal in so many ways. My day job, I work at Austin Habitat for Humanity. And we turn away 1,000 unique families a year. And we reach out to other housers in the community and we're like, what about you guys? What can you guys do to help these folks? Oh, yeah, our waiting list is full. We can't, we can't. And, you know, no matter how much we want to pat ourselves on the back for building 20 or 30 homes this year and our community partners building hundreds of other amazing homes every year, a land development code that straight up sucks and is terrible is unconscionable. Like, we've got to just kick this thing out of here and get a new land development code. And unless we fumble, we might just allow for responsible land development in this city within the next year. And that just blows my mind. And I just love it. So thank you all. And now let's send this on to council and help them get it over the finish line. And thank you for the community groups that are out there helping to push this through. You know, I know it's really easy to try and scare people about this code. But for those of you who are doing the good work of just making this code even better, thank you all.
Is that everyone? So I was, I wasn't born and raised here, but as they say, I got here as fast as I could. And it's been an absolute blessing. Austin's been a blessing and blessing after blessing. You know, the community where I was born and raised and where my parents were born and raised, they're busy metropolitan cities. And citizens honestly don't have the luxury, don't, they don't have this luxury to be a part of this process. And we have the ability to debate about affordability and equity and how this community grows. And we have, including the citizens, citizens and us, have a chance to provide input. And it's been an absolute blessing and honor and a privilege to serve with every one of you. I have a tremendous amount of respect for anyone that puts in the kind of hours that, that we have, that you have, that staff has. And it's really been, really been an honor. You know, when, when Code Next was sort of pulled off and declared deemed dead, I guess, that was lots of hours that commissioners spent on. And I'm, I consider us fortunate to be able to salvage some of that. And that council was able to use some of the work that we had done in, in the various working groups to answer the five questions. I want to acknowledge the work that Commissioners Oliver and White and Knuckles and McGraw and Schistler, Dojoz Hart, Saragosa, all of these commissioners have done in the past. And, you know, we were able to, I think like Commissioner Flores said, get through this better than we did last time. And I think I have to acknowledge that we started off with a much better baseline, thanks to staff and council and the city manager. I think that we're in a good spot. I'm very excited to see this move forward. And and I'm losing my train of thought, so I'm gonna stop there. So that's everyone. Are we ready to take a vote? All right, let's take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. All those against? Abstaining? Okay. Against were three, right? Okay. So nine to three. Whew! All right. Thanks, everyone. We've got a couple more things on the agenda, though.
Chair, can we all take a moment to just thank Andrew?
Yes.
I just want to say, Andrew, you've taken my odd dying emails. So thank you for just guiding us and keeping us all along.